Welcome to our Planning Commission. And Commissioner Gary Watts, would you lead us in the flag salute?
Please join me saluting the flag. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Watts. A roll call, please.
Vice Chair Hagel.
Here.
Commissioner Ruiz.
Here.
Commissioner Solis.
Here.
Commissioner Watts.
Here.
And Chair Charlie Trejo.
Here.
Thank you, Denise. Do we have any public comments on non-agendized items?
We have received none.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so today, we are conducting a hearing in the matter of the revocation of conditional use permit of the bank and Zip Third Investments and consider proposed decision of the Office of Administrative Hearings. The recommendation is that the Planning Commission conduct a public hearing in the matter of the revocation of the conditional use permit of the bank and Zip Third Investments, consider the proposed decision of the Office of Administrative Hearings, and render a decision upholding or denying the proposed decision. This hearing is proceeding under Temecula Municipal Code Section 17.03.085. All right. I will open the public hearing. And I'm going to go ahead and read the rules for the public hearing. Any person may submit written comments to the Commission before a public hearing or may appear and be heard in support of or in opposition of the approval of the projects or projects at the time of the hearing. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the Commission's secretary at or prior to the public hearing. For public hearings, each speaker is limited to five minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the Commission's secretary or by submitting an email to be read aloud into the record at the meeting. Email comments must be submitted to planningcommission@temeculaca.gov. Email comments on all matters, including those not on the agenda, must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments. Any person dissatisfied with the decision of the Commission may file an appeal of the Commission's decision. Said appeal must be filed within 15 calendar days after service of written notice of the decision. The appeal must be filed on the appropriate Community Development Department form and be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee. All public participation is governed by the Council Policy Regarding Public Participation at Meetings adopted by Resolution Number 2021-54. Okay, so, we will start with the attorney for the city and have her present their case. Thank you.
Okay. Great. Good morning, honorable chairperson and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Jennifer Petrusis, and I represent city staff in this proceeding before you today. Now, the purpose of this hearing is for the Planning Commission to decide whether to confirm, modify, or revoke, I'm sorry, or overturn, an independent hearing officer's decision to revoke the conditional use permit that was granted to the bank restaurant. To quickly introduce this matter, city staff seeks to revoke the CUP after issuing over 100 citations and civil penalties over the course of 17 months for violations that the bank admits to making. An administrative law judge with the California Office of Administrative Hearings heard all of the evidence offered by the city, by the owners and operators of the bank restaurant, and from the owner of the property on which the bank is located, and decided that the CUP should be revoked. Now, according to the municipal code, the decision by the administrative law judge is automatically reviewed by the Planning Commission. However, this isn't a full evidentiary hearing. The parties will not be offering any new evidence at this hearing today. Pursuant to the municipal code, the Planning Commission shall only consider the evidence that was presented to the administrative law judge and any new evidence offered by the public today. To sum up the city's position, given the evidence of 17 months' worth of violations of the CUP, including admitted violations of its operating hours, admitted violations of the approved hours to sell alcohol, undisputed excessive noise violations, and evidence that the bank had become a disorderly house in violation of its CUP, the Planning Commission should confirm the administrative law judge's decision to revoke the CUP. I'd like to next give you an overview or roadmap for my presentation this morning. So first, I'm going to discuss the history of the CUP that was requested by and issued to the bank. I'm then going to discuss the specific violations, the timeline of those violations over the course of 17 months, and the many, many citations and civil penalties that were issued to the bank. I'm then going to explain that city staff has taken all of the necessary steps to comply with the municipal code requirements to revoke the CUP. And then, I'm going to discuss the hearing that occurred before the administrative law judge, the evidence that was presented, and the ALJ's decision to revoke the CUP. So first, a history of the CUP that was requested and issued. To begin, in November 2007, Craig Puma of CNC Corporation, I'm sorry, CNC Puma Corporation, applied for a minor conditional use permit for use by the bank restaurant. And in January 2008, the Planning Director approved PA 07-0314. Now, the purpose of that CUP was to upgrade from a type 41 ABC license to a type 47 license so that the restaurant could sell distilled spirits. And then later that year, also in 2008, Mr. Puma sought to modify the CUP to extend the hours that the bank could sell alcohol. And the Planning Department approved that. That was PA 08-0236. Now, through this modification, the restaurant manager could decide to stay open past its regular operating hours until 2:00 a.m. And on those instances, alcoholic beverages could be served until 2:00 a.m. with a last call of 1:30 a.m. A few years later, in 2012, Mr. Puma requested another modification of the CUP so that he could have certain live entertainment at the restaurant for background music while dining. And the Planning Department approved that, and that was PA 12-0041. However, the conditions of approval changed the approved operating hours, and there was no longer a provision permitting the restaurant to stay open until 2:00 a.m. Now, the bank asserted at the administrative hearing that the hours must have been changed back in error. However, Planning Manager Stuart Fisk testified at that hearing that he was involved in the issuance of the 2012 minor modification, and that the Director of Planning at the time told him he would only approve the 2012 minor modification application if the hours of operation were set back to those of the original 2007 CUP. The hours set forth in the 2012 conditions of approval were not an accident, were not made in error, they were purposely set. So to be clear, there is only one CUP at issue in this proceeding. It is 07-0314, which has been modified twice at the request of Mr. Puma. The final conditions of approval for the 2012 modification are the current conditions of approval, and they supersede the first minor modification and the provision that the restaurant could stay open until 2:00 a.m. So I'd like to now go over some of the important, relevant provisions of the current conditions of approval for the CUP that are relevant to this proceeding. The approved hours are contained in Condition Number 12, which is at page 113 in your Agenda Packet. The restaurant must close by 10:00 p.m. Monday through Thursday and on Sundays, and at 11:00 p.m. on Fridays and Saturdays. The approved hours for sale of alcohol are also in Condition Number 12, and they require the sale of alcohol to cease by 10:00 p.m. Monday through Thursday and on Sundays, and at 11:00 p.m. on Fridays and Saturdays. And the consumption of alcohol must cease one hour after these closing hours. The bank can have indoor entertainment consisting of one keyboard or other instrument played with one vocalist for the purpose of providing background music from noon until 10:00 p.m. That's in Condition Number 9. And according to Condition Number 28(c) as in cat, the licensed premises may not become a disorderly house. A disorderly house is defined in the conditions of approval as a licensed outlet that disturbs neighbors with noise, loud music, loitering, littering, vandalism, urination, defecation, graffiti, and/or has many ongoing crimes inside or in the parking lot such as drunks, fights, assaults, prostitution, narcotics, et cetera. As part of its normal process, staff notified Mr. Puma about his right to appeal the conditions of approval. That document is page 111. If Mr. Puma wasn't happy with the conditions of approval imposed as part of the modified CUP, he had 15 days from the date of the approval to appeal. It is undisputed that Mr. Puma never appealed the conditions of approval. Now to discuss the violations of the CUP by the bank. The city first became aware of the bank operating outside of its approved operating hours when they received a complaint from the Temecula Police Department. The police department had noticed problems related to over-serving of alcohol at the bank and resulting disturbances caused by fights and public intoxication. Code enforcement field supervisor Tom Cole began walking with police officers in the Old Town area, and he personally observed the bank operating outside of its approved operating hours and serving alcohol past the approved hours. Mr. Cole also observed customers of the bank falling down from intoxication and vomiting, and he observed individuals picking a fight with Temecula police officers, and all of this was happening after 11:00 p.m., which is the required closing hour. The Temecula Police Department also noted that on many occasions, individuals stopped for public intoxication and arrested for DUI were telling them that they were coming from the bank. The police department observed several assaults per night happening in front of deputies and in front of the bank. They also noticed that security guards from the bank would push individuals who were fighting away from the restaurant into the street. Most of these incidents occurred after 11:00 p.m., and a vast majority occurred closer to midnight to 2:00 a.m. outside of the approved operating hours. In January 2022, there was a shooting at the restaurant that occurred after the restaurant should have been closed. The shooting involved an ex-employee of the bank who had worked at the bank as a security guard and who had a felony conviction at the time that he was working at the bank. That former employee was killed, three other individuals were shot. A few months earlier, in November 2021, another shooting occurred when patrons of the bank were celebrating a birthday at the restaurant got into a verbal altercation, and a shooting occurred approximately 50 to 100 feet down the sidewalk. Mr. Cole determined the bank was violating the city's noise ordinances, and he used a decibel reader to take noise readings. Now, the permitted level of noise in Old Town is 70 decibels. Mr. Cole would check noise levels from an adjacent property at the bank while a DJ was observed playing after approved hours, and that level was 95 on numerous occasions. The bank is permitted to have certain indoor dinner entertainment consisting of, as I mentioned, one keyboard or other instrument and one vocalist to provide background music from noon until 10:00 p.m. However, the bank had a DJ with speakers pointed into the street intersection, producing loud and excessive noise in violation of the city's noise ordinance and in excess of what live entertainment was permitted by the CUP. Beginning in March 2021, Mr. Cole started issuing citations to the bank for violating the approved operating hours beyond 11:00 p.m. and for having excessive noise levels with outside speakers in violation of the CUP and the municipal code. Mr. Cole issued 34 citations between March and July of 2021. The violations continued. So pursuant to the municipal code, Mr. Cole began issuing civil penalty letters to the bank, which have a higher fine amount. He issued 109 civil penalty letters from July 2021 up until we had our hearing before the administrative law judge in August of 2022. Now, on August 20, 2021, shortly after Mr. Cole started issuing civil penalties, Mr. Cole sent a notice to Zip Third Investments LLC. That is the company that owns the property on which the bank is located. And the purpose of this notice was to let Zip Third know that its tenant, the bank, was violating the Temecula Municipal Code, including that it was operating in violation of the permissible operating hours. Mr. Cole never received a response from Zip Third. Zip Third was then sent copies of each of the civil penalty letters that were thereafter issued to the bank. All told, 97 civil penalty letters were sent to Zip Third. They were copied. City staff used the address for Zip Third that is listed with the California Secretary of State, and Mr. Solomon of Zip Third testified at the hearing that this Wilshire address is the correct address. None of these letters were ever returned as undeliverable, no person from Zip Third ever reached out to Mr. Cole. So all told, staff issued over 100 citations and civil penalties over the course of 17 months. The bank continued to violate the CUP even up until we had the hearing before the administrative law judge as part of this revocation process. Now, I'm going to talk about the banks and Zip Third's reaction. So Craig Puma, again, his company is CNC Puma Corporation, owns the restaurant, and he was aware of the citations. He testified that he was aware of the citations. Amanda Lane is the president and CEO of that corporation, and she is the day-to-day manager of the restaurant. And she also was aware of the citations. In fact, she paid approximately $15,000 in fines as she received citations and civil penalties. Both of them contacted Luke Watson to claim that the operating hours in the CUP were incorrect. Mr. Watson explained, no, they're not, and he provided the operating hours again to Mr. Puma. He explained that they must file a minor modification application if they wanted to change those approved hours. The bank never applied, no one ever applied, for a minor modification to change the operating hours. And certainly, we know that Mr. Puma knew how to do that because he had done that twice before with the CUP. No one ever appealed any of the citations or civil penalties. And as I mentioned, a portion of them were paid, the majority, though, have been left unpaid and are delinquent. Additionally, Mr. Cole had several conversations with Ms. Lane over an approximate 18-month period regarding the bank's violations of approved operating hours. Ms. Lane never told him, though, that she would comply, and so Mr. Cole continued to issue citations and civil penalties. With all of this, city staff really had no other choice but to proceed with this revocation action. Now, Section 17.03.085 sets out the process by which the city may revoke a CUP. It begins with the Planning Director sending a notice to the permit holders and to the city clerk that explains that he is recommending the revocation of the CUP, and that was done. That letter is at page 267 of your packet. During testimony before the administrative law judge, both the bank and Zip Third admitted that they had received this notice. The next step in the process is to have a public hearing before an independent hearing officer, and in this case, as I mentioned, the hearing was held before an administrative law judge with OAH. The ALJ received oral and written evidence from all of the parties, heard testimony from Mr. Watson, Mr. Cole, and Sergeant Huffner of the Temecula Police Department, and from Planning Manager Stuart Fisk regarding all of the violations. The ALJ also heard testimony from the owners and operators of the bank and from a representative from Zip Third. Of particular note during the hearing before the ALJ, the owner and operators admitted to operating the restaurant until 2:00 a.m. Ms. Lane testified that the bank typically closed at 2:00 a.m. on Fridays and Saturdays, and that on Sundays, it typically closed between 10:00 p.m. and midnight. They admitted to selling alcohol past the approved hours in the conditions of approval. They admitted to having a live DJ that will perform usually up until 1:00 a.m., depending on the day. Ms. Lane also admitted to having drag show performances at the restaurant. During the hearing, a private investigator retained by the city testified that he went to the bank on July 10, 2022. This is after the Planning Director sent the notice that he was recommending revocation. That investigator observed the bank continue to operate and sell alcohol after 11:00 p.m. Notably, when the investigator went outside of the restaurant to take a noise reading, he was approached by two security guards from the bank who threatened to beat him up if he did not give them his phone. They had apparently seen him taking photographs from inside the restaurant. So, there was evidence presented of 17 months' worth of violations, and that these violations continued even after the city notified the bank and Zip Third that it intended to seek revocation of the CUP. As to Zip Third, Ms. Lane testified that she contacted an individual with Zip Third in July 2021 to inform him of the citations that were issued from the city. As it turns out, this person is with the property management company hired by Zip Third. Mr. Solomon of Zip Third testified that his office had received some of the civil penalties sent to his office. He admits to receiving at least 16, the earliest dated March 7, 2022, which was before the Planning Director sent his notice. Of course, it is city staff's position that all 97 civil penalty letters were sent to Zip Third, none of which were returned, but at the very least, Zip Third was on notice of the violations in March 2022, which was five months before the hearing before the administrative law judge. Based on the evidence presented by all of the parties, the ALJ decided that the city had demonstrated by clear and convincing evidence that CNC Puma Corporation, doing business as the bank, had frequently and continuously violated the approved conditions of approval for its CUP. Specifically, the ALJ found that the bank violated Condition Number 12 by continuously operating outside of its approved operating hours, that it violated Condition Number 12 by selling alcohol to customers at hours beyond the approved hours, violated Condition Number 9 by having live entertainment beyond that which was permitted in the CUP, and violated Condition Number 28(c) by becoming a disorderly house. The bank argued that it did not realize the approved hours had changed in the last modification. The ALJ found that any mistaken beliefs about the permitted hours did not absolve the violations, and that is certainly city staff's position as well. The ALJ also found that the bank had created loud noise beyond what was permitted by the municipal code, and that law enforcement had established the bank had become a disorderly house in violation of the CUP. The evidence presented to the ALJ established a long history of intentional violations of the CUP. We are not talking about a few isolated mistaken violations. What we have here is a restaurant that for over a year and a half refused to comply with its CUP. No doubt, the bank does not want to close at its approved operating hours and wants to stay open later than 11:00 p.m. on Fridays and Saturdays, but it decided to continue to violate rather than to go through the proper process of applying for a minor modification or even to appeal any of the citations, any of the civil penalties. City staff was left with no other option than to bring this revocation action. As the AL determined, the city has met its burden of establishing violations of the CUP and that the CUP should be revoked. Accordingly, city staff requests that this Planning Commission confirm the independent hearing officer's decision to revoke the CUP. Thank you very much, and I'd like to reserve the rest of my time for rebuttal.
Thank you so much for your presentation. You might want to stay there in case we have questions for you as commissioners right now.
Of course.
Okay. So, but thank you for that presentation. It's very clear. So I'm going to start on my left with Commissioner Ruiz.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Petrusis. I did have a question in reviewing the packet. There was the 2008, the original CUP acceptance signed by the applicant. 2008 in the packet was presented, but there was no signature, at least it didn't appear signature in our packet. Was that ever signed?
Do you mean the 2012 conditions of approval? Was that ever signed? I don't, if it's not in the packet, I don't believe we have a copy of the signed conditions of approval.
Yeah, I was just looking for those two, the 2008 acceptance and the 2012 that would be signed from the applicant acknowledging that they accepted those terms to that CUP modification.
Right, and what we do have, though, is evidence in the testimony that Mr. Puma received the conditions of approval. He does not dispute that he ever received the conditions of approval.
Perfect, thank you.
Commissioner Watts, on this end? No questions? Questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Okay. We will move on to the attorney for the bank and restaurant owner to present their case. You also have 45 minutes if you need it.
Thank you. Mr. Ruiz, in answer to your question, they did not sign it. The Temecula Municipal Code provides that they are to sign it, and our position The Temecula Municipal Code provides that they are to sign it, and our position is they never did accept those conditions. My name is James Penman. I was the elected city attorney for the city of San Bernardino for twenty-six years. Dealt with many of these cases. When I was first hired on this one, I did my usual practice, looked at the record, see if I needed to advise my clients, I just need to say, hey, city's right, and go from there. When I got into the record, I saw that wasn't the case here. In making the recommendation to revoke the decision, to revoke the CUP, the planning director relied on a great deal of incorrect information given to him. One of those things was that a murder had occurred at the bank could have been prevented by the restaurant owners, and that's in the testimony, merely if they'd closed earlier. And Mr. Watson testified to that. The shooting occurred at ten thirty-nine, ten forty-eight, and we've just heard the city attorney say that the restaurant was supposed to close at ten, but patrons could continue to consume alcohol for an hour afterwards. Shooting occurred at approximately ten forty, according to Sergeant Hepner. So I had nothing to do with that. There was nothing that they could have done. Planning director said that there was numerous violations, so forth and so on, but in fact, the record does not completely substantiate that. And that's what you're being asked to look at, is the record. Primary problems in two thousand and eight, bank applied for the minor modification, which was granted, and it allowed the bank to stay open until 2:00 AM Thursdays, Fridays, and on holidays. On February second, two thousand and twelve, the bank applied for another modification solely for the purpose of having live entertainment. The request to have live entertainment was granted, but in preparing that, the staff person inadvertently missed the two thousand and eight modification allowing the restaurant to stay open until 2:00 AM. How do we know that? There are three ways to tell that that was a mistake. One, in two thousand and seven, the bank had a type forty-one liquor license, allowing only the sale of beer and wine. In two thousand and eight, that minor modification upgraded it to a type forty-seven. But if you look at the two thousand and twelve modification, excuse me, if you look at the two thousand and eight modification, you will see that the staff cut and pasted, I'm getting ahead of myself, the two thousand and twelve modification, the staff cut and pasted not the two thousand and eight modification allowing them to stay open until 2:00 AM on weekdays and holidays, but the one from two thousand and seven requiring them to close at eleven, Fridays, Saturdays, and weekends. How did that happen? They simply missed the two thousand and eight modification. How do we know that? They later testified. Testimony indicates in the second transcript that when the bank went to the planning department to ask for a copy of the two thousand and eight modification, they couldn't find it. They didn't have it. Bank went to ABC, and ABC had filed the two thousand and eight modification, which showed that the bank was allowed to stay open until 2:00 AM. The city did not have it, and that, they testified, that testimony is in the records. There's a twenty twenty-one exchange between planning director Lou Watson and planner Stuart in the evidence that's before you, and there's no, a number of emails, not emails or in evidence, there's no discussion of changing the hours appears on the record of that two thousand and twelve application, and there's that problem with the emails. January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, plan director Watson emails Fisk, and includes a copy of the two thousand and twelve modification. And Watson is confused or uncertain, you can see that in the, in these emails about what happened. And Fisk emails to Watson, "I don't recall taking anything to hearing to modify their hours," referring to two thousand and twelve. Are you recalling something? Watson, expressing surprise, responds, "No, just the closing hours are so early." That's Exhibit A of the hearing evidence, page four, excuse me, Exhibit H of the hearing evidence, page four. Jamie Cardenas denied to the bank that the city had a copy of the two thousand and eight minor modification. That, that's, information is on page one forty, lines fourteen and sixteen, minor modification, two thousand and eight, Exhibit I. Cardenas also told Ms. Lane, the, one of the owners, that the restaurant can be open until 2:00 AM, relying erroneously, I believe, on language in the two thousand and twelve modification, nonetheless, the evidence shows that's what she was told. Cardenas also told Lane, according to the transcript, volume two, page one forty-nine, line seven to fifteen, that the city went from one program to another, and when they changed programs, they lost a bunch of documents. So, okay, I don't know when that was, and I don't work for the city, but based on what Jamie Cardenas told me, and this is Ms. Lane testifying, she formed the opinion the city did not have possession of the two thousand and eight minor modification, which is why Mr. Pumas went to ABC and got a copy of it. They did have it, and they presented that to the city. Mr. Puma emailed a copy of that to Mr. Watson on March third, twenty twenty-one. Now, the city claims that the reason they did not enforce the new hours from the time of two thousand and twelve, and that modification, until they started enforcing it in February twenty twenty-one, nine years later, was they didn't know about it. But that's not what the evidence shows. The evidence shows that city staff and officials were at the bank restaurant themselves, having dinner after 10:00 PM. This record does not justify the decision made by administrative law judge. We do not use administrative law judges in San Bernardino because our finding was that they have contracts with the city, and if they don't come back with decisions favorable to the city, their contracts don't get renewed. We use independent hearing officers, retired judges, attorneys, who had a two- or three-year contract that cannot be renewed for another two or three years. So the motive to just rule in favor of the city was taken away. You don't have that here in Temecula. And I think that's a problem, and I think it's a problem in administrative law judges. And that's one reason why the courts give more credence, in my opinion, in my experience, to hearing officers who have limited contracts that can't be renewed than they do to the administrative law judges. Now, the testimony of Sergeant Hepner was that the homicide occurred on January ninth, twenty twenty-two. He was not working that evening, but he was briefed on it. There were subjects, two males, one pulled a gun. You've heard the city attorney say that, that they were at the bank. Uh-uh, not so. How do we know that? Because, according to the testimony, subsequently, two officers went to the bank and asked to see a copy of the tape from the November twenty twenty-one shooting. This is the second, this is the first shooting, the one that they, I'm skipping here, but there was another shooting in November twenty twenty-one, and Sergeant Hepner testified that the patrons were at the bank. They were not. When the investigating officers went to the bank and saw the tape, they saw the bouncer turn away the two people that were involved in the shooting because they were already intoxicated, having come from other restaurants. And the officers told the bank staff, okay, they were never here. That's in the, that's in the transcript as well. That gets in volume two, page one sixteen, line sixteen to twenty-five, and page one seventeen, lines one to eight. You have this, all of these things I'm saying are, the citations are in here. Sergeant Hepner also testified that at a candlelight vigil for the victim of the murder, he encountered a person who was acting suspiciously, and he searched him, and he found a gun on him. And that was an arrest that he attributed to the bank. Problem is, testimony also shows, bank was closed the day of the vigil, January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, transcript volume two, page one thirty-seven, line six to seven. Bank wasn't open. And this is all the evidence that Mr. Watson had, the planning director, when he made the recommendation to revoke the CUP. And it was based on this wrong evidence that Mr. Watson made that decision. Sergeant Hepner testified that a security guard, whose name, the sergeant believed, was Venom, refused to tell the deputies he had witnessed, what he'd witnessed the day of the November twenty twenty-one shooting. And he said he was uncooperative and wasn't, wouldn't provide the information. But subsequent testimony shows that when he reported that to the bank management, they fired the man the same day. Sergeant Hepner testified they fired him for another incident later. Not true. The evidence shows they fired him the same day. Evidence further shows that the man's nickname was not Venom, it was Virus. Why is this important? Because Sergeant Hepner testified that in his experience, as a police officer, understandably, when someone had a, a moniker or a nickname, they were affiliated with a gang. And he made the assumption that this guy that he thought his name was Venom, that was the case. Later testimony showed his name wasn't Venom, it was Virus, and he was an artist, and somehow that's how he got the name. Sergeant Hepner testified that there were other security guards at the bank that had nicknames, and that indicated to him they maybe had gang affiliation. But subsequent testimony showed that the only other moniker or nickname by a security guard at the bank was Eagle. And that man was a Native American, and the nickname Eagle was given him, to him by his A list of the incidents involving DUIs shows, connected to the bank, shows a stolen vehicle on July third, twenty twenty-one, supposedly came from the parking lot behind the bank, but bank doesn't own that parking lot, it's open to the public. Person ran into the restaurant, lady, young lady crying, her car had been stolen, restaurant called the police. Police came, but the bank got stuck with that as one of the crimes occurring at the bank. Suspicious circumstances called related to the bank on August one, twenty-one. Bank staffer testified, it's in the record, that was her birthday, and she remembered it. And they were open that day, but nothing happened. By the way, you'll notice a lot of those incidents say no report. I, I think more than, about half of them say no report. When it says no report, because when the officers got there, there was nothing to report on. There was no evidence of anything having, having occurred. Another occasion, an older homeless man was outside the bank, yelling and swearing. He was known to the police. Bank staff called, the police responded, and that was charged to the bank as a problem there at the restaurant, even though the man had never gone into the bank. As to the list of the bank's calls for service, which are in the transcript, the other ones are in there too, and you need to look at those. The bank is listed in this one period as having had forty calls for service. That's in Exhibit L. Excuse me. Exhibit L is the stampede, which had sixty-three calls for service, twenty-three more than the bank. Exhibit M, Pub, seventy-five calls for service. Again, the bank, forty. Exhibit N, Adelaide, forty-eight calls for service. Again, the bank, forty. Exhibit O, Bailey's, had twenty-seven calls for service. Exhibit P, Blackbird, had twenty-nine calls for service. Calls for service are not unusual in an area such as Old Town Temecula because it's an active area. And that's going to happen. And the practice on calls for service is if it's in or near the bank, it's attributed to the bank. Imagine, you've got a prom neighbor next door, they're fighting, yelling all the time, playing loud music, you call the police. Report comes back, some point in time, your house has had so many calls for service on it because you're the one that called the police. And that's what happened. In many of these cases, it was the bank employees who called the police. And yet, Mr. Watson based his decision to revoke the CUP on that type of information. Mr. Watson testified that we have a well-worn philosophy for code enforcement, we're not here to take a heavy hand, first talk with the owners, look for voluntary compliance, so forth and so on. If that doesn't work, then we go to the penalties. Tom Cole, field supervisor of city tech of Temecula, also testified the ultimate purpose of any violation is compliance. Despite those explanations, Mr. Watson, when asked, "Why did the city stop issuing those viola, noise violations on July twelfth, twenty twenty-one?" Watson responded, "Probably because they stopped violating code and the conditions of approval at that point." That's transcript, volume one, page one twenty-three, lines twenty twenty-five, page one twenty-four, lines one to five. Similarly, when Tom Cole, code enforcement officer, was asked, "Why the bank wasn't cited for violations after July twenty twenty-one, do you know?" "Yes, I do know. They turned down their, they turned their music down and took their speakers from being outside." And then he was asked, and that was the result of the speak, of you speaking with someone there at the bank? "I believe so." Question, how long after that conversation was the problem abated? "I believe the following week." And then later, he said, "It may have taken a couple of weeks." He was asked, "Do you believe the problem had been resolved?" "Yes." So if the problem was resolved in July of twenty twenty-one, why was the hearing officer giving testimony that one of the basis for revoking the CUP was the noise violations? Noise violations that had stopped more than a year before the hearing before the CUP? If it, if you look at what Mr. Cole and Mr. Watson testified to, the goal is to get compliance. Evidently not. Evidently, the goal was to build a record that even if they corrected it and got compliance a year ago, we still use it as a basis to revoke the decision, to revoke the CUP. That problem continued on all the way through the administrative law judge hearing. Problem of the confusion over the city misplacing the two thousand and eight modification, which allowed them to stay open the two. The city at that point believed they didn't have, they believed it was two thousand and seven. That's why when they did the two thousand and twelve, they cut and pasted the hours from two thousand and seven, skipping the change in two thousand and eight. Mr. Watson went on to testify that, about that incident of November twenty twenty-one, where there was a shooting. The bank, the PD told me they were at the bank. I don't know if they were at the bank drinking. Well, sheriff found out they weren't at the bank drinking because the video showed them being turned away by the bouncer. Watson was then asked, "Do you know of anything the bank could have done that they didn't do that would have prevented the shooting?" This one talked about the murder. He said, "Closed on time." Well, they did close on time. They closed at ten, the patrons continued drinking as the two thousand and twelve CUP minor modification allowed. They closed at 10, the patrons continued drinking as the 2012 CUP minor modification allowed. And the shooting occurred at 10:40. But Mr. Watson didn't know that. And he was asked, after he said that, you know, they had closed on time, the problem would have happened, how would that have had any impact? His answer, maybe they all wouldn't have been there. Question, but you don't know that? Answer, well, no, you just asked me if I thought there was anything they could do. Okay, other than that, is there anything else they could have done? Answer, no, Mr. Watson. Yet, when he made the recommendation, which went to the ALJ, he based it on the bank not closing on time. They did, they closed at 10, but the patrons under the 2012 modification could continue drinking till 11:00. You, question to Mr. Watson. You said earlier there are a number of crimes that happen at or near the bank that you associate with the bank, is that correct? Answer, yes. How close does something have to be at the bank for you to believe it's close enough to be their fault? Answer, that is a question for the police department. I'm not on site, I go off what they tell me. He actually goes off what he understands they tell him. Wait a minute, planning commissioners. Mr. Watson is the one recommending the CUP be revoked. Doesn't he have an obligation to verify the facts on which he bases his recommendation? Question to Mr. Watson, what do you believe associated means? Watson's answer, they are patrons, they are employees. They were somehow associated and going there and doing business there. And yet, the evidence shows that that was mistaken on the case of the November 2021 shooting, which is one of the major things that Mr. Watson based his recommendation on. Mr. Watson was asked, why do you believe revocation will solve the problem of the bank? His answer, well, it's specific actors that are involved, that are operating the business in this manner. Removing the liquor from the environment is certainly gonna help, I don't know if it'll solve everything, but that is what we have at our disposal to enforce, and that's what we're using. Question, you indicated code enforcement reaches out to owners to act collaboratively. Did you reach out to this owner, a phone call? Or something that isn't an enforcement letter? Mr. Watson's answer, no, we didn't. City did not follow its well-established procedures. That's not, my clients testified, that's Mr. Watson testifying. First, he says we reach out to them and try to work it through, and then we do a gradual progression of things, didn't do it. In any event, as planning commissioners, there's reason you're here. State requires cities to have planning commissions. You're a check and balance on the city staff. It is not your job, just as you know, to rubber stamp what the city staff does or to rubber stamp what an administrative law judge does. It's your job to decide whether or not the information presented to the administrative law judge is sufficient in its totality to support revicating the permit. We respectfully submit it's not. And what we're asking you to do is to be that check and balance that you're intended to be and cut off the damages to the city. This case is gonna go to Superior Court. Superior Court's gonna look at these records. They're gonna see what you just heard, what it was based on, they're gonna hear the disputes. And by the way, the city attorney said our client submitted the violation, they never admitted them. They paid the violations, they said that, because they also testified, and it's in the record, that they believe the city would eventually realize, once they gave them the 2008, um, permit, so the city had their own records, which they got from ABC. City would come around and say, hey, yeah, we made a mistake, we cut and pasted. We took it from 2007, set it to 2008. Every day that the bank is hitting this stuff, uh, damages against the city are accruing, it needs to be cut off. I would never have let this case go to a revocation, a city attorney in San Bernardino. I didn't wanna be sued as a city attorney, and I wanna lose. And I see this as a losing case for the city. This, this is not something that needs, that needs to be, uh, taken any further. The buck can stop with you, it doesn't have to, but it can. And I encourage you to do your job as good citizens of the city of Temecula, as responsible planning commissioners, stop this. Look at the, look at those transcripts. And you'll see that the testimony was mistaken. And Mr. Watson, in effect, backed off. Thank you for your time. And I'm reserving my time, by the way, the remain, remainder of it. This says I've gone 19 minutes and 28 seconds. And I'm also renewing my motions for the admission of that video. And, uh, for a continuance if we're not allowed to, so that the problem, uh, the criminal case can be resolved, and the commission can hear the, uh, video and see that there was no argument leading up to that murder. It happened very quickly, no way that the bank was put on notice that there was some dispute going on. And that's in the testimony too, but you haven't seen the video yet. And there's good reasons why you haven't seen it. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Penman. Uh, do we have any questions for Mr. Penman at this time?
I have a question.
Mr. Commissioner Solis?
I have a question, just very simple. What is the active CUP right now that your client has right now, active on the property?
According to the city, it's, uh, the 2012 CUP.
Okay.
But we contend that was a clerical error. And that the 2000, because the 2012 application was just for live entertainment, it wasn't to change the, um, it wasn't to change the hours. And I don't believe that one was accepted either. I, if I'm, memory's right, but you checked that, I might be mistaken.
So, so your client did apply for a modification to the existing conditional use permit? And that's how the PA 12 came up?
And applied for it solely to allow live entertainment, not to change the hours.
Okay. And my other question is, um, what is the, uh, the, the resolution or the conditional use permit that ABC has on file? What is the, what is the one that you're referring to that, that said that is incorrect?
The one that the ABC had on file, which the city now has as of March 3rd, 2022, is per, uh, conditional use permit 2008, which allows them to stay open to 2:00 PM. That's what ABC has. Now, ABC by now may have number 12 as well.
Right.
But the city had lost number eight, or didn't said they didn't have it, and our, and they got it again, after our clients retrieved it from ABC. And it's in the record, by the way, Exhibit.
Sure.
I, I don't recall Exhibit number, but 2008, 2012, and 2007 are all in the, uh, transcript of the Ministry of Record before you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Solis.
Excuse me, I have a question for you. Just a point of clarification. So the 2012 modification was for music, is that, that correct?
Uh, live entertainment, music, yes, yes, sir. Yes, sir, by understanding.
Is your, your position was that they did not sign that?
Uh, on the 2012?
Right.
My recollection is they did not, but I don't wanna represent that to you, make a mistake. I don't have it right in front of me, uh, you can check it and see. My recollection is they did not sign that, and they did not sign the 2008 as, uh, Mr. Reese pointed out.
Your client did start providing music after that, though, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Watts?
Mr. Penman.
You're not done.
I'm sorry, my apologies.
On the 2012 minor modification, and it was returned to your client, and you're stating that it wasn't signed by the city, is that correct?
No, it was signed by the city, it was not signed by my client, to the best of my recollection.
Why not?
That's, pardon?
Why not?
Uh, I don't know the reason it wasn't signed, I speculate because they didn't agree with it, that they didn't accept the conditions.
And those conditions included the, uh, change of hours for operation, is that correct?
That's correct.
And did your client recognize he didn't sign it because he didn't agree with it? Why did, did he bring that to the attention of the city?
Yes, he did, in, in fact, well, he brought it to the attention of the city when the city started to enforce the, uh, nine years later, when the city started to enforce the 10:00 PM closing. He testified, uh, Mr. Puma, who's actually not my client, but he was the guy involved at the time. So it's hard for, that's why I say I speculate, because I don't know why he did sign it. But he testified to the city that he just looked at the part that said it was approved for the, uh, purpose he had requested, which was, um, live entertainment, and he put it in an envelope and put it on the counter. And that's last he saw of it. And I believe his testimony, I believe his testimony, it's in the transcript, was that he did not see that the hours had changed at that time, and it wasn't until 2009. But the fact that he didn't sign it, I think, you can say it's a technicality, but technicalities can matter too, sometimes. And, um, according to the, uh, Temecula Municipal Code, my reading, uh, the applicant's supposed to sign the acceptance, to show they accept it, he didn't accept it. So I don't think the burden was on him to go to the city, I think the city's burden was to go, hey, why didn't he sign this? City should have contacted Mr. Puma, said, you haven't signed this, that means you haven't accepted the conditions. Burden was not, so the attorney's trying to put it on the, the bank, why didn't they apply? Why did the city just walk away and allow that unsigned, uh, uh, document not be followed up on?
That's fine, so you're confirming then that the, the new information was contained in the 2012 minor modification that was returned to Mr. Puma, correct?
Yes, I confirm that, but he did not accept that, he did not sign his acceptance.
And he didn't do any kind of formal protest or, uh, objection or anything of that nature?
Not to my knowledge, again, he's, he's not my client.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, Mr. Penman, you're not done yet.
Just, uh, just to follow up there.
Can I ask you a question? My 45 minutes have now run, and, uh, do the questions count against those?
No.
Okay, thank you, I'm relieved.
It doesn't count against it.
Thank you, I didn't know.
We just have some questions for you.
Ask all the questions you want.
Thank you, and, and I just wanna clarify, so on the 2012 modifications of CUP, you've referenced a couple of times live entertainment. That was for a single instrument or single vocalist up until 10:00 PM? That was what that modification was requesting, correct?
Respectfully, I don't recall specifically, but I, um, I don't recall to a certainty, my recollection is that it was, uh, for live music in the manner you suggested, one person was getting, presenting live music. That was the reason behind it. However, you would need to look at the conditions to see if the conditions limited them to only one person. And I don't recall reading that. That, that was what motivated him to do it, that may have been what he put on the application. But it's the terms, the conditions of approval, that you would have to look at to see, uh, if he, if the bank was limited to just one performer, and I don't recall that respectfully.
Okay, I, I believe that's what it did state in there, and then it also did state 10:00 PM. I was just trying to confirm that we were talking about the same thing, because live entertainment today has a different meaning also. So I just wanna make sure that we were talking about the same description.
I, I think we are.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, if I might?
Yes.
A rule of procedure here, we had agreed for the procedure that we will be running today, that the bank had 45 minutes for the presentation of their case. So there's no ability to reserve time, so I think there was a, about, uh, we'll have to check with the planning secretary, but I believe there's about 18 or 19 minutes left. So if, uh, counsel has anything further he wants to add, the time to do so is now.
Um, I'm confused, because the city attorney reserved time for rebuttal, and I was trying to reserve my time to respond to what she responds to.
Thank you so much, counsel. So the agreed procedure, the city has the burden, the city goes first. They have 45 minutes allocated, of which they can allocate any portion of that for their rebuttal. That is the only party that gets rebuttal. Zip Third and Puma Corp each get 45 minutes.
Okay, so I won't be allowed to come back, then?
You will not be allowed to reserve time, that's correct.
Okay, very good. Then I do have just a couple more things to say.
Uh, let us set the clock, if we could, please, um, and hopefully somebody kept track. They reset your 45 minutes.
19 minutes and 28 seconds.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for that clarification, Ms. Fox. Uh, hold on one sec.
Yep, 19 minutes and 45 seconds.
Uh, so, uh, commissioners, we'll go ahead and let him finish. Let's go ahead and let him continue, and then if we have any more questions, we can ask him when his time is finished. Thank you.
Thank you. Cities today have a huge problem. They don't have enough money to hire the number of police officers they need to police their cities. It's not the fault of the city. What is problematic is when problems develop that are in the proper venue of law enforcement, and there are not enough officers on the job to handle them. And the city needs to do something, they're getting complaints. There was a murder there, there was a shooting down the street. There was a violent incident inside the, um, inside the establishment. And by the way, one of those incidents was, the officer testified that a guy was badly beaten, um, by the, um, bouncer. Turned out that, uh, the guy was kicked out of the club, went to Officer Deputy Baumann to complain. Baumann came back, uh, looked at the video, saw that he was not beaten by the bouncer. What happened was, and this is in the testimony, the guy was using a camera to go under girls' skirts. And he was, the bouncer kicked him out. And he goes to the, uh, deputy, and deputy's name, Baumann, and he comes in and checks, and he looks at the video, and he says, okay, you didn't do anything wrong. Those aren't his exact words, my notes were there, but roughly that's what he says, and that was it. But the testimony was that that had happened. You know, the, this entire case is built on, ma'am?
So I don't have the time going down on mine here, so I just wanna know so that I-
I thought he was responding to a question?
No, he's going on with his time. All right, thank you.
Okay, my, my thing shows I have 19 minutes, 37 seconds approximately. Okay, thank you. Cities have this problem. The problem is, we don't have enough law enforcement. And when the public starts complaining, cities need to do something to show the public they're responding. Again, I did this for 26 years, I know, I know it well. So what do you do? You shift the blame, you blame the business. We're doing something, we're gonna close that business, we're gonna take away their CUP. But wait a minute, they've got property rights too. Uh, the testimony is there, the city planning director admitted there was nothing else they, they could have done. But yet, they're gonna pull their permit, and one of the basis is those, those two shootings, what I suspect one of the main basis. How are you responsible as a third, uh, when the third party comes on your property? Even if you invite them on, let's say you have, you have a party at your house and you invite a guest. And heaven forbid your guest, somebody brings the, invites somebody, they bring somebody, that person pulls out a gun and shoots somebody. So that- So that'd be your fault, it's your house. And it shouldn't be their fault either. They had security. The testimony was that the security wasn't wearing the right uniforms, that they had criminal backgrounds. But the other testimony from the bank was that we didn't know of any criminal backgrounds. That is not what the police told us. And they are wearing the proper identifications, and they've been wearing them since the day the city of Temecula required them to start wearing clearly identifiable uniforms or jackets saying security, which was July 31, 2022. Prior to that, they weren't required to do it. But the planning director believed, the administrative law judge believed, that there was a murder there that could have been prevented. There was a shooting down the street. The officer testified it was less than a block. The business testified it was more than a block. This attributed there. But the officer thought that the people involved in the shooting, November 2021, had been drinking in the bank, and they weren't. The video showed them being turned away by the bouncer. So this is a big mess. It's going to get unraveled at some point in time. I don't know if it'll be in the Superior Court, or the appellate court, or the California Supreme Court. It doesn't have to go that far, because you guys can look at those transcripts yourself. You know, I understand administrative law judge might believe what the officer said. But the officer may or may not have known about the follow-up visit, the one that the officer testified, where the video showed they were turned away. And by the way, the sheriff did not take that video. They took the videos of the incident of the murder, but they did not take the videos of the guy being turned away because the investigating officers were satisfied, oh yeah, they weren't here. So for their purposes, they didn't need the video. They would have needed, they would have taken it had they been there, but they didn't take it. And that's in the evidence too. So I spend a lot of my time advising city officials, we can't violate someone else's rights just to make the city look like we're doing something. Because elected officials, you know, they answer to those voters, as they should. And they don't want to say, we can't do anything. Can they do anything? Yeah, they can cut the budget somewhere else and hire more cops, but that's a tough call. And I'd be the first to admit that. But that's the problem. It isn't just in Temecula, it isn't just in San Bernardino, it isn't just in California, it's everywhere across the nation. There's violence, things are happening. And obviously, they need to be rectified. But the way to rectify them is not to take away the conditional use permit of a good restaurant that runs a good business, where the owners do what the police says. The testimony in the record shows that Captain Hall, the sheriff's department, called Ms. Lane and said, hey, the city wants you guys to close down earlier than 2:00 because we're having all these problems. None of the other restaurants will do it. Will you do it? Yeah, we'll do it. And they stopped closing at 2:00, and they closed at 12:00. And Captain Hall told her, it's in the transcripts, nobody else was doing that. They did that several times. The parking lot behind the bank is owned by the same property owner that owns the bank. He's done everything, he's put like 19 cameras in there to watch that parking lot. The bank paid for their security to go and patrol that parking lot because there were incidents happening there, even though the bank had no control over that parking lot. They did that. And the other neighbors appreciated it. The other tenants of the property owner thanked Mr. Solomon for what the bank was doing. Mr. Solomon testified that he had no complaints amongst his other tenants, who were right there adjacent to the bank, about the bank. And yet the testimony of city officials and Sergeant Hepner is that this occurred, I think Mr. Watson occurred immediately adjacent to the bank. It did not. It occurred down the street. Mr. Watson made his decision based on erroneous information. And I know what happens to planning directors, and so do you. You know, the mayor, the council member called the city manager and say, you know, hey, we're having all these stuff, and the bank is getting the blame, and you got to do something about it. Watson, in his testimony, expressed surprise that the, excuse me, in the emails, Watson expressed surprise that the bank was being told to close that early when the 2012 permit was issued. You can see it, it's right there. It's in his words, back and forth between he and the other planner. This thing was a mistake. It was an accident. And our clients testified to that. They said it was, our clients testified it was an honest mistake. They don't think the city purposely lost or disregarded the 2008 permit. Somehow it got lost. And according to Jaime at the counter, it got lost because the city changed its programs, and that happened. And I can tell you, 26 years in San Bernardino, we've changed programs three or four times, and every time we changed, something went wrong. I suspect that happens with you when you upgrade your computers to some new system. You may have some problems. Maybe you're more technologically sophisticated with computers than I am, but I know, we had a guy come in the other day and upgraded my wife's computer, and she says she can't find anything she saved, she doesn't know what to do. We had to have the guy come back and train her how to do it. It happens. It's an accident. City's not bad. Nobody is out there trying to hurt anybody. The other problem is, one planner testified that when he changed the 2012 application, he was told by the planning director, Mr. Richardson, at the time to do it. That doesn't make any sense, because the testimony of Mr. Puma shows Mr. Richardson's the one that told him he needed to apply for a change in his permit, so he had live license. Why in 2012 did Mr. Richardson, who retired, I think the testimony is in 2013, suddenly direct this planning staffer to change the hours and roll them back? There weren't any problems going on of this nature at that time. There was no reason. There's no discussion in the 2012 record of changing the hours. I suggest what happened is, the person who testified to that is the person who cut and pasted the 2007 hours under the 2012 permit. He's the one that missed the 2008. Maybe he missed it because it wasn't there. But he had a couple of explanations, how did this happen? And some of the statements, you need to ask Mr. Richardson, but we don't know where he is. He retired, he's gone. Since March of 2021, the bank has been complaining to the city about the 2008 document being lost or not being there. There's been a lot of emails in that time, there's a lot of evidence. Why did this planner wait until the hearing before the administrative law judge to announce that he had been told by his boss to roll the hours back? I suggest, because I don't think that's what happened. Because otherwise, he'd have come forward and said, oh yeah, Mr. Richardson told me back in 2012 to roll those hours back. And why would Mr. Richardson have done that? There were no complaints going on. City of Temecula didn't start enforcing the 2012 closure time at 10:00 until February or March of 2021. That's when the problems really started. Maybe a little before that, they started in Old Town overall. The bank should not be the one to bear the burden, the sole bearing of the burden of the problems Old Town is having. They didn't even have the majority of calls for service there. Regardless of how you look at the calls for service, whether they're founded or unfounded, whether they're related to the bank or not, I mean, they had less than most of the other, there are only two other restaurants that were looked at that had that. How did they get those calls for service? Mandalane, manager, owner there, calls Captain Hall, says, I need the calls for service. They're saying that we got excessive calls for service. It was Captain Hall who got those numbers for her. That's in the transcript. He's the one that came up with it. The owners of the bank had a good working relationship with the city. City people came to their restaurants, had a good working relationship with the sheriff. Sergeant Hall calls them, hey, could you close at midnight? Because the city's on us, you know, about these problems. And it wasn't just the city at that point was asking the bank, it was asking all the restaurants to close at midnight. The bank was the only one that did, according to the evidence. Now we turn around and say, you know, some guy walks into your restaurant, didn't really, wasn't even inside, he was in the patio, and he's got a concealed weapon, and some guy comes in that he has a longstanding feud with, and he takes advantage of that opportunity and shoots that guy, and shoots an employee, an ex-employee of the bank. That's something else, too. Mr. Watson testified the guy that was murdered was an employee of the bank. He was an ex-employee of the bank. He'd been let go from the bank. He'd just come back that day. He worked as a cook at another restaurant down the street, the deceased. When you see that much conflict in a transcript, and, you know, when the burden of evidence is either reasonable preponderance or clear and convincing, which I believe it would have been before the ALJ and before you to revoke a CUP, clear and convincing, it's not that clear and convincing when you've got that much dispute and that many credible witnesses. No one in those transcripts accused Ms. Lane of lying. The only really suspicious thing is, all of a sudden, this one gentleman planner comes forward and relates a conversation that is not in any record, is not in any email, was never given as a reason why we rolled back your hours, but all of a sudden, Richardson's been gone since 2013. It's now September 1, 2022, I'm testifying before the administrative law judge. Yeah, Mr. Richardson told me to do that. He told me to roll back those hours. I think he's asked, you know why? No, I don't know why he did it. So he told me, I did it. Maybe that's true, maybe it isn't, but clear and convincing evidence, don't you need something more than that? Shouldn't the administrative law judge want something more than that? But the problem for the administrative law judge, and the problem for you, is you've got all of this stuff you just heard from the city attorney, all of this terrible things that are going on there. But when you start picking them apart, and you look at them one at a time, no, they're not. Bank doesn't have any more incidents there, other than the murder. And that's a big thing. Don't get me wrong. That horrible joke we heard in junior high, other than that, how was the play Mrs. Lincoln? I mean, a terrible joke. But nonetheless, that could have happened on your property at a party you had with a guest that someone you invited brought. And that's what happened to the bank. And the bank should not have their livelihood cut off. They put a lot of money into this community. The evidence is, they paid all the back fines were paid. When the current owners, Mandalane, took over the running of the restaurant, they paid all the back rent to Mr. Solomon. Excuse me, they did not pay all the fines, they paid all the back rent. They paid the fines at that time, not as an admission something was wrong, but because they were trying to work with the city, and the evidence in the transcript says they didn't want to make the city angry. That's why they paid them. But when the city moved in the aggressive manner it did, would not meet with them, would not call them, then at that point, they stopped paying the fines. And they owe those fines. And if this thing's yet resolved, they're going to pay those fines just to show their goodwill. But there's a strong legal argument that they don't have to pay fines for being cited for going beyond the hours, when that requirement was a mistake, just a simple mistake, and they shouldn't be having their revocation, their CUP revocated for excessive noise when they stopped doing that, admitted by both Mr. Watson and the code enforcement officer, when they stopped doing that in July 2021. And the recommendation to revoke the CUP didn't come out to March 2022. And yet it's partially based on something that they came into compliance on. They corrected exactly what Mr. Watson and exactly what the code enforcement officer said. The purpose of the citations is, is to get compliance. They got compliance. And yet, this is still hanging over their head. I'm not going to use all of my time. I hope you'll listen carefully to what the city attorney says in rebuttal, because she does have a burden. And she has the burden because the city wants to take away the livelihood of certain people. They want to take away their conditional use permit, despite the fact that between 2012 and 2021, they never cited them or did anything to them. Fire department inspections, I'm sure, once a year. Nobody said, hey, they're closing too late, whatever. And all this misinformation in there. Please remember the points that I made after Ms. Petrusis finishes her rebuttal. Our clients never admitted they did anything wrong. They don't believe they did anything wrong. They think the city made an honest mistake, and now they're paying for it. And the public can look at it and say, well, city should do something. The city says, what are we going to do? We can't afford to double the number of police officers. And that's another thing. After the murder, they not only hired more security, they doubled the number of security they had there. But as Mr. Watson testified, there's nothing else they could have done to have prevented that murder. Nothing, other than close on time. And Mr. Watson was mistaken, because they did close at 10:00, but under the 2012 CUP, they're entitled to have their patrons stay there another hour and consume alcohol. And the patrons did. The murder occurred at 10:40. 11:00 was the cutoff time for the consumption of alcohol there. If they were consuming alcohol, they probably were. I assume they were at that hour. You've been very kind to listen to me, I appreciate it. I apologize for talking so long, and for a couple of mistakes I made. I've been tested for COVID, I don't have it. I do have a slight upper respiratory infection, which is why I've been wearing a mask to protect everybody else. And my thoughts are probably not as clear as they are every single day. I have 19 seconds left. Thank you. I'll shut up, unless you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Penman. I'm going to have our counsel clarify a couple of things, so you can go ahead and have a seat. And then if we have any other questions from you, we'll have you come up.
Thank you, Ms.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There were a couple of points that were made at issue here. One is the failure for there to be produced in the transcript a copy of the executed acknowledgement of the conditions of approval for the 2008 and the 2012 modification to the CUP. There is a body of case law that says, when you accept the benefits of the conditions, you also add the permit, you also accept the burdens. And of course, there was some questioning by one of the commissioners about, in fact, they did accept the minor modification, they did have some live entertainment there. And so there is an established case law that makes that clear, that the failure to sign those is of no moment. As well, there was a question raised about the use by the, in this instance, of the administrative law judge. You can see from 17.03.08.5 that that specifically provides that the city clerk shall refer the matter to the California Office of Administrative Hearings for the assignment of an administrative law judge to serve as an independent hearing officer. That is Section A1B of 17.03.08.5. The administrative law judge said on the record she had no affiliation with the city of Temecula. There has been- There has been absolutely nothing put in the record that there's any motivation or any financial interest or anything other than an unbiased decision maker from the administrative law judge. In fact, the issue is again from a published decision, Hawes versus County of San Bernardino, that took issue with the manner in which the county of San Bernardino had retained its hearing officers. And in that particular case, there was evidence of an improper motivation of getting more work from the city, none of which is apparent here. And quite the opposite, the city has gone very thoughtfully in its approach and its municipal code to make sure that it has an independent hearing officer.
Thank you so much for that clarification. I wanted to have that clarification before we asked any other questions of Mr. Penman. Do you still have questions for him? Okay, Mr. Hagel. Okay, any other questions on this side? Okay, thank you. Okay, go ahead. Commissioner Watts.
Mr. Penman, you mentioned Mr. Richardson.
Let's have Mr. Penman come on up again. Thank you.
You actually referenced Mr. Richardson quite a bit there.
Yes, sir.
In the last part. Did you attempt to locate him?
Yes, we hired a private investigator. Private investigator was not able to, to locate him. We found a video online of a presentation that he made to a group. We tried to follow up with that, we were not successful. We are now, we're still trying to locate him, we're trying, because we're, we'll probably be going to court. And we're doing that through some other, some other avenues. So yes, yes, sir, we did.
Okay, you tried, but you were unsuccessful.
We were not successful. Tried hard, spent quite a bit of money trying. Before I was on the case, my client spent quite a bit of money hiring a private investigator.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Can I ask, Ms. Fox, just to clarify, that the Hodge case was the county of San Bernardino and not the city of San Bernardino?
Madam Chair, everything should go through you. Yeah.
Oh, I apologize. Through the chair, I, and I know that, I'm sorry, I apologize. Through the chair, I, I don't want any of the planning commissioners to believe that the Hodge case, which I'm well familiar with, was the city of San Bernardino, was the county of San Bernardino, as Ms. Fox clearly said, and I was just asking her to reaffirm that, that it was the county of San Bernardino that was doing something wrong, not the.
Okay. I don't think it's really relevant to what we're discussing right now, but, but thank you for your presentation, and I don't think we have any other questions. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you all again.
So I did want to ask my colleagues if you want to take a little five, 10-minute break? Okay, so we're going to take five or 10? Five-minute break right now. All right, I think we have everybody back that we need. All right, we will go ahead and call up the attorney for Zip Third Investments for your presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hope it was okay, I made a little modification here for my height and my eyesight. This is a cardboard box and it's not scratching the table.
Hey, I like it, that's awesome. Tell us your name, please.
My name is Rick Edwards. And I represent Zip Third LLC, and its manager, Mr. Solomon, is, is in attendance today.
Okay, great. And will you be the only attorney speaking?
I'll be the only attorney speaking.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And you know you have 45 minutes. Okay.
I couldn't miss it.
All right, great.
Thank you. So, believe it or not, without ever seeing any of you before, I thought of you, and I thought of you when I was watching the Super Bowl, and I'll tell you why. There was a call at the end of the game, a holding call. It was criticized a lot, because it wasn't a major violation, but it was a violation. And as a result, many people feel the game was changed. You may remember it was a holding call on a defensive halfback. Now, even the guy for Fox Sports, who's supposedly their officiating expert, said, oh, I don't think you should have called it. But it was a violation of the rules. And what I'm, why I thought of you is, we have a violation here by the city of its own rules in revoking the conditional use permit as to my client. I do not represent the bank. But as to my client, the property owner, and we heard, by the way, that the CUP holder, we heard from the city's lawyer, that the CUP holder is the bank restaurant. That's true in part, but the administrative law judge specifically said, and I'll show you when we get to the slides, there are two permit holders, one of which is Zip Third, my client. I don't criticize the procedure at all used regarding the bank. It was very lenient. But as to my client, the procedure was improper, and I'll go through that with you. Now, why do I mention the Super Bowl? Those referees take an oath that they will enforce the rules. I tried to get that oath from the NFL. I got into voicemail jail to the Public Relations Department, and maybe they figured I'm going to, you know, jump an official or something, so they never got back to me. But I do know they take an oath, and they take an oath to, to enforce the rules, and that referee enforced the rule, and the player said, I held the guy. It was a hold, I just hoped I could get away with it. So here, what I'm going to ask you to do is enforce the city's rules. The city of Temecula's own code, that's what I want to talk about. And that code says, and you've all taken an oath, I believe, to support the code. I'm, I tried to get the planning commission oath, I couldn't get it. I got the city council oath, and the clerk tells me the same oath is given to the planning commission, so I hope, I hope I'm correct on that. But anyway, you take an oath to support the Constitution, and we have a federal and a state constitution, they both provide for due process. And the city of Temecula wrote a code that specified the process for this type of a proceeding, a revocation. And Mr. Watson testified, CUP is a valuable property right, and my client has it. And the city, at Title 1, Section 1.21.050, basically makes it idiot-proof, that anybody gets notice of violation if they're a permit holder, and here's how they get it. We'll go through this, word by word. By the way, even if it counts against my time, if anybody has a question when I'm talking, I personally don't like listening to speeches. I'd rather be here than where you are, I'd be worn out by this point, frankly. But if anybody has a question, even if it counts against my time, if you don't want to hold it, just jump in. I welcome questions, because I'm not here to mislead you. I'm going to give you facts, I represent that. I'm going to give you citations, I represent that I'll do that, and I'm going to give you excerpts of the city code. I'm not down here talking from anything but the bottom of my feet. So with that, let's, let's proceed.
We'll go ahead and ask questions when you're done, though.
Okay.
Just to be clear with my commissioners.
Okay. I'm not trying to rewrite the rules.
No, 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 just wanted to be clear.
Okay. But anyway, this 1.21.050, it provides, first thing you, you want to try to do is serve the person personally, hand it to them, and get them to sign for it. If you can't do that, then you send them a notice by certified mail. And if you send it by certified mail, and you want to protect against it coming back unsigned, you also send it by regular mail. It's very, very business-friendly to the property owner, as Mr. Watson testified, the city is very business-friendly. So here we have, as you've heard, an investor, and it came out that Mr. Solomon and his entities own nine buildings in Temecula, they own the entire block where the bank is. He invested down here after doing hundreds of projects for the last 40 years, in part because it was business-friendly. And he went in and introduced himself to Mr. Watson. Nobody refuted this, and he became acquainted with the city's procedures. So he's up there in LA. I left, I, I left at 6:00 this morning, because I wasn't sure how long it would take to get here, only took two hours. But yesterday, if I would have left at 4:00, according to Siri, it would have taken me more than three hours. So it's not, this is a great town, it's beautiful, but it's not a, not a dinner destination if you live in Santa Monica, as, as I do. So you've got a property owner in LA, assuming the property owner, because of your code, is going to get notice. And I will show you, there's no evidence that he ever received anything personally delivered, and he never received anything by certified mail. The city doesn't contend that, they do not contend that. Basically, here's the temptation, and I completely understand this temptation. The temptation, just like in the Super Bowl, is to say to you, well, look at what happened here. Let's just not apply the rules to this. Let's just overlook the fact that there was no personal service, not once. Let's overlook the fact there was no certified mail, not once. Let's overlook the fact that never, not once, not a single time in the whole 17 months, did anybody say to Mr. Solomon, you did something wrong. You, the property owner, did something wrong. You are a responsible person. We are citing you. You have to do something about this. Now, I will get later to the precise testimony, because there was an inaccurate statement by the city lawyer. The city lawyer said that in June or July of 2021, the, Ms. Lane, who runs the bank, contacted the property manager for the property owner and said there are being citations, there are citations being issued. That's not what that testimony was, and I clarified it on cross-examination. And I will show you that, that she did say, well, we're being hassled, but she's not, she doesn't remember when she told them there were violations. The testimony by Mr. Solomon was that when regular mail, now, not in compliance with the code, regular mail started arriving at his office in March of 2022, the property manager contacted Ms. Lane and was assured that she was handling citations from the city, that she was operating, as her lawyer said, and this is, I don't think anybody contests that. They operated for nine years, the same way they were operating when they started getting these citations, except they added a musical person. But those hours had been going on for a long time, without citation. I'm not defending the bank, I'm not, I'm not saying they shouldn't have appealed or whatever. I'm just saying, there was never a complaint to Mr. Solomon, this is all in his testimony, and I'll give you sites if you like, never a complaint by any tenant that he has in Temecula. And that's a lot of tenants, including that entire block, about the bank. No complaint from the police department, no citations to him, no certified mail. How is he supposed to know? He's not clairvoyant. But get back to my point about the Super Bowl, please, you have the responsibility, you took an oath to uphold the Constitution. The Constitution includes due process. Let me get to your oath, if I can make this thing work. Mr. Watson was very kind and showed me how it worked, but it's not working. So there, there is the, there is the oath. And I'm sure you're familiar with it, but it's to support and defend the Constitution of the United States, well and faithfully discharge the duties. And underneath that, I have the name of a case. I don't know why this is. Today's Fresh Start. And that basically says that both the state and federal constitution require due process before depriving property owner of a property interest. And I've got Mr. Watson's testimony that a, quote, "A CUP conveys a vested right to the property owner," close quote. Now, I'd like to, if you look at, I've handed out packets to all of you, I'm sure you have it on your computer also, but look at one of the first things that happened at the administrative hearing. The administrative law judge says, am I hearing from you that there are two, two permit holders here? Both the property owner and the restaurant operator? And the city lawyer, Ms. Petrusis, said, yes. Then, the, the court, the administrative law judge says, okay, I have the party's position on that very critical issue. And then she said that she agreed with the party's position. Now, why is this important? It's important for the reason I alluded to earlier. The property owner has a property interest in the conditional use permit. They are a holder of the permit. Why are they not given any citations? Why did that happen? I'll tell you my theory, why it happened. I don't think, Mr. Watson, by the way, is a terrific trial witness. I've been evaluating trial witnesses for 50 years. He is a darn good witness. He, very well-prepared. He testified, and nobody will dispute this, and I'll give you the site later, he testified there hadn't been a revocation proceeding in 10 years. This is a business-friendly city. He testified, and I have no reason to question the guy. I asked him to help me with this, I mean, I trust him. The bottom line is, he, he testified that the city, and this was read by the bank's lawyer, the city wants to collaborate with property owners. He testified, and you'll see this in the slides, that first thing they do before they send out warning letters, even, they go and talk to the person, said, here's the rules, we want you to comply with the rules. They give them a couple of weeks to comply with the rules. If the rules aren't complied with, what do they do? They don't hit them with administrative citations, they send them warning letters. And he said, we want to work with them, we don't want a heavy hand, you heard that read. But I will show you, when I examined Mr. Watson, he was very forthright, I gave him a straight A. He said, no, we never talked to the property owner. We never did. The procedure, he said, the city procedure, and this is in compliance with the spirit of the code, it's not a legal requirement. I can't stand here and tell you they have to do it, but this is what they say they do. Exactly what I just said, collaborate, talk, urge compliance. Then they issued these administrative citations, which went on about five months, Ms. Petrusis absolutely accurately described that. Then they elevated to civil penalties, but that was all against the bank, never the property owner. Now, as a technical matter, I don't like technicalities, this is why, if I were the referee in the Super Bowl, I probably wouldn't have called it, didn't look big enough. I would be a bad referee. But I didn't take an oath either. If I took the oath, I'd have to enforce the rule. The point, the point is, they could mail, they could mail citations to the property owner, but that's not effective service. Now, you can say, oh, the property owner must have known, we, we say we sent 97 citations to him. Here's the irony, the bank, which got all this collaboration, got meetings with city people. The bank got everything perfectly per the code. They got in-person visits, they got certified mail to their agent for service of process, and Mr. Watson's team went one step further, they sent regular mail to the bank. This all came out in Mr. Cole's testimony. So they got concierge treatment, but the property owner, who's going to be there after the tenant is gone, did not. What happened when the property owner learned what was going on? Now, this was COVID. Mr. Solomon testified that he's 76 years old. He was hiding, he was not going to his office, he did not want to catch COVID. Thank God, we're kind of past it, but those were the days when a lot of people hid. So whenever these letters started coming to his office, and Ms. Petrusis absolutely accurately stated that he acknowledged getting 16 of them, they were in the office, but here's where she missed the point, they were not delivered to him. If, if I'm in an office and I see something certified mail, I'm going to make sure the boss knows about it. Probably it has legal significance, financial significance, or it's some kind of a hoax, but one and two are more likely. His office made a phone call to Ms. Lane. Now, you can say, well, the property manager should have told them. And I don't disagree with you, the property manager should have told them, but the code does not require that. The code, as I said, makes it idiot-proof. Even a negligent property manager is very likely to say, hey, I got a certified letter here, and it must be important. I got a certified letter here, and it must be important. They're talking about violations, they sent it certified. You need to know about this." This was not brought to his attention. By the way, his testimony, which went on quite a while, was never impeached. Nobody said he was wrong about this fact or that fact. Totally a straight arrow and very credible, as was Mr. Watson. But the point is, the code is on Mr. Solomon's side. And the code is what I'm asking you to enforce. So if you look at the next slide that I have, is one point two, one point oh, five, oh. And that is, that is the kind of code section you want if you're a property owner. The requirements. First, the enforcement official has to attempt to locate you. Now, Mr. Solomon is not hard to locate. I'll tell you the irony here. The city says they sent ninety-seven violation letters to Mr. Solomon. They sent a revocation letter, and they said to his Wilshire Boulevard, Los Angeles address. The city sent a revocation letter. "We're going to revoke the permit to him May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two." You know where they sent that? After they say they sent ninety-seven letters to him that he says he only got sixteen of, starting in March. They sent it to him at the bank, at the bank. Not to his address, which they said they've been using, but to the bank restaurant. Ms. Petrusis must have figured that out. They continued the hearing because they didn't have adequate notice to the property owner. And on July first, at five o'clock, the Fourth of July weekend, she called Mr. Solomon. He's not hard to reach. She called him and left a voicemail message. He got the message and called her back at five fifteen. He then learned the city planned to revoke the permit. Somebody reached, Ms. Petrusis did the absolute wise thing, I applaud her. She made up for what hadn't happened. She called him. The city could have called him at any time. You'll see that Mr. Cole said, "I wonder if the property owner knows about this." And then sent an August twenty letter to Mr. Solomon by regular mail. And that letter says, "This is to inform you," meaning, "We're telling you that your tenant is violating." There's no assertion, no assertion that Mr. Solomon or Zip Third is violating anything. Nobody attempted to hold him responsible or told him he was responsible or attempted to fine him. Nothing like that whatsoever. Now, what happens after he learns? What happens after he learns July one? He gets a bankruptcy lawyer, because the bank is in bankruptcy. I don't know if any of you have familiarity with bankruptcy. But if a bankruptcy's been going on for a few, a couple of years, like the bank's bankruptcy was going on, it's not that easy to get a judge to dismiss the bankruptcy case. I think that's a statement I can make to your common sense. He went in and got a bankruptcy lawyer down here who testified to this, who went in and got the bankruptcy dismissed. That's not child's play, because of the violations. And that set the stage so he could bring an unlawful detainer action. That dismissal on an expedited basis, despite years of planning and so on in the bankruptcy court, was August twenty-third. The dismissal order is in the record. Next step is to bring an unlawful detainer. That had not happened at the time of the, of the hearing. It's not in our hearing, which was August thirty-first and September first, referring to the revocation hearing. So I can't talk about what happened afterwards, because I'm going to stick to the record. I'd love to, but I won't. So, anyway. I think, I think I'm kind of pounding the drum, maybe to the point of nauseating you, that the service was bad, was not service at all. Now, the administrative law judge states, "It seems to be the question legally will come down to, can the city hold this permit holder responsible for violations of the CUP by their tenant?" Now, let's look at City Code one point two, one point oh, two, oh, C. Responsible person means any person whom an enforcement official determines is responsible for causing or maintaining a violation of the code. Term responsible person includes, but is not limited to, and it lists all the people who could be a responsible person, including a property owner. But the city never said, "You, sir, are a responsible person. Your entity is a responsible person. We are citing you." Responsible person could have come into play if the city had said, "There's a public nuisance here." That's Title Eight of your code. That's, that's the only section of your code that I can find that says a property owner has as its agent the tenant. In other words, if the tenant does something bad, you can attribute to the property owner, a public nuisance. That's not what happened here. They didn't proceed on that basis. And according to the rules, they have to, they have to accomplish service in the way I've told you. Even if you think it's ticky tack. That's the city of Temecula rules, that's due process, that's what you are sworn to uphold. Now, the, I argued to the administrative law judge, "You've got these violations by the bank." I'm assuming, you know, I'm assuming, I understand, I completely understand the argument that who in their right mind would give up these late hours when you make all your money selling booze to have somebody play music at dinner and lunch? It's hard to believe that the guy who went in and applied for the modification in two thousand twelve understood that. But that's not my fight. I'm not here trying to defend the bank. But the, but the point of the story just is, with the property owner also being a permit holder, I would, if you look at Section Four of the CUP, it says that the city can review and modify this conditional use permit based on changed circumstances. Now, here, I gather the changed circumstances. The business got loud, and the business operated too late. And there were supposedly, I didn't witness any of this, so I don't know, but there was testimony as to assaults and crimes in the area and so forth. So, the city fought and offered testimony that it had grounds to revoke as to the tenant, the bank. But they didn't offer grounds to revoke as to the property owner, who was never cited and who was not responsible, according to the city code. The property owner's circumstances did not change. There was no basis to revoke as to the property owner. It didn't do anything wrong, and it wasn't cited. It was the tenant whom the city complained of. And I mentioned the bankruptcy order. And that is, that's the bankruptcy order dismissing the bankruptcy. Now, I, I'm not going to belabor this, but Mr. Watson did talk about, as I alluded earlier, talking to the owners. And I asked Mr. Watson, after he talked about talking to the owners, and by the way, I completely commend him on this procedure. He's business-friendly, exactly as he says. As I said, he was a very good witness. I asked him this question, and he answered me very candidly. "You testified that the code enforcement situation is the city tries to be business-friendly and that the city does not want to use a heavy hand as to owners, but instead to work collaboratively." I think I quoted that pretty accurately. "Based on that, did you ever attempt to contact Mr. Solomon at Zip Third, or anyone at Zip Third, by phone, for example?" Answer, "No." Then I asked him, "My question is, you indicated that code enforcement reaches out to owners to act collaboratively. Did you reach out to this owner to act collaboratively? Meaning a phone call or something that isn't an enforcement letter? That is my definition for purposes of this question." His answer, "No, we didn't." Now, I want to be clear, "we didn't." I'm not suggesting for one second that Mr. Watson personally did anything wrong. He seems like a very efficient guy, very good public servant. My own theory is, they hadn't done a revocation before. They weren't that familiar with a proceeding. They did the best they could, they went absolutely by the book as to the tenant, obviously, but not as, as to the property owner. And the property owner is not an unimportant person. Property owner comes down here, buys property, generates revenue for the city, rents property to people, and in the case of this property owner, nine properties in the city of Temecula, and met with Mr. Watson. To his credit, he didn't deny the meeting, he just said he didn't recall it. And I believe he didn't recall it. I'm sure a lot of people want to talk to him. But, but the administrative law judge noted in her decision that Mr. Watson acknowledged that he never reached out to the property owner. I've got the slide I want now. "Service on the bank was proper, service was not affected on the property owner." We've gone through this. But if you look at Mr. Cole's testimony, it's a primer on how you serve an administrative citation. He said, "I mailed those certified and regular mail. I mailed them to the agent for service of the bank." And if you look at the last answer on the slide, he says, "I did not initially mail this, the civil penalties, to Mr. Solomon. We discussed internally about, 'Does the owner know? Let's let the owner know.'" "So I sent the letter that we discussed on August twentieth." And then he was asked... And he says that they mailed them regular mail to Mr. Solomon and Ms. Moore, but he mailed them certified and regular mail to the bank's agent for service of process. So I'm not sure why they digressed from the procedure regarding the property owner. Some misunderstanding, hard to believe it was deliberate, but that's what was done. And there's no debate about this. This isn't, this is, there's no spin. There's no evidence that it happened any differently than I'm telling you. And as we'll see in a minute, the city has a really heavy burden here. It's clear and convincing evidence, and I'll show you before I finish, California Supreme Court saying, "Clear and convincing evidence is evidence that is highly probable and compels the unhesitating ascent of every reasonable mind." I'm paraphrasing, but I'm within a word or two. It's not as severe as beyond a reasonable doubt, but it's way, way above preponderance of the evidence. When you look at this record, there's no, no clear and convincing evidence that you can revoke as to the property owner. There's no reason that you can't revoke, if you choose to, simply as to the restaurant owner. This business of revocation, and this is why Mr. Watson said, they didn't, even regarding the bank, even after all about those months, he testified, quote, "This is not a decision we made lightly." And I believe him. He did not make that decision lightly. He gave, he, from the city's perspective, if I were the city, I would say, "We gave them every chance. What more can we do?" If you believe that that's a valid conditional use permit, I completely agree with him. He did give them every single chance. He didn't make the decision lightly. And they shouldn't make the decision lightly, because it's capital punishment. It's the most severe punishment you can provide. And there is no reason in the world that that should be administered to the property owner here. I can understand the temptation to do it, because you can, you can kind of think, "Well, there were letters sent there. Yeah, that's not exactly what the rule says." But if the property manager didn't tell them, whose fault is that? We're not going to require what the code says. But that would not be the right thing to do. That's not what you're sworn to do. I understand why it might be what you want to do, but it's not what you were sworn to do. Now, by the way, the tenant is in violation of the lease. This is the basis for an unlawful detainer claim, because failure to report to the landlord, and all these violations were being alleged. And Ms. Lane testified that she did not know of that requirement. Now, we heard from Ms. Petrusis that in June or July of two thousand twenty-one, Ms. Lane told Mr. Pinkerton, the property manager, about the violations. But that's not the testimony. I'm not casting the first stone at Ms. Petrusis. She's, she's been honorable. So I cross-examined Ms. Lane. And this is transcript day two, one sixty-nine, lines eleven through nineteen. Okay, I understand now, you had a conversation with David Pinkerton. And was this conversation referring to the conversation where he called you about the parking lot? Let me start there. Wasn't it a situation where she contacted him? He called her about the parking lot, the testimony was, there were problems in the parking lot. Mr. Solomon caused all those cameras that Mr. Pennman told you about to be put in the parking lot. Also testified, there was a loudspeaker system, all kinds of crazy stuff was happening in that parking lot. You'd think it was a wild fraternity party. But they had a monitor, a dispatch system, to send somebody out there if necessary. And here are these people getting drunk or whatever in the parking lot, and somebody's watching them and yells out over a live loudspeaker, "Get out of here." And it worked effectively. So that, that was the parking lot they're talking about. So she, so I asked her, "Am I clear with you what I'm talking about now, the parking lot conversation?" The answer was, "Yes." Which is then approximately late June, early July, two thousand twenty-one. Am I correct? Answer, "Correct." So then, page one seventy, this is day two, lines nineteen through twenty-two, twenty-three. "I recognize your testimony. You said that call you had with him was a long time ago, and you said you were being hassled by the city attorney? Am I correct you told him that?" Answer, "Yes." And then, "Do you know, Ms. Lane, whether it was this conversation or some other conversation where you said to him, 'I've gotten some citations or official communication from the city'?" She said, "I know we had it in that conversation. I don't know if we had it in a previous conversation as well." So then I asked her, "Okay, as best you can tell me, you said before it wasn't detailed. What is your best recollection of what you said? And let me tell you what I'm trying to get at. You just mentioned I'm getting hassled, or did you say, 'I have gotten a citation'? And if you don't know, say you don't know, but be as precise as you can." And here's the testimony. I actually, I would actually be guessing if I said, "I know, I know, I told him we were being hassled. I couldn't honestly say if I said exactly if there were citations, not citations, what it was about. Like I said, it was, it was, like I said, it was mostly, and then that was the end of that topic." But she didn't know what she told him. She knows she talked to him about the parking lot in June or July of twenty, two thousand twenty-one. She doesn't know that, if she talked to him about citations. And he contacted her about the parking lot, not about citations. So there was a little, I understand the confusion there. But the version you were given by the city attorney is different than what Ms. Lane actually testified. the city attorney is different than what Ms. Lane actually testified to. And there was one other statement by the city attorney that Mr. Solomon knew about these citations in March of 2022, because that's when some of them showed up at his office. As I said, they weren't sent certified mail. His testimony, which was never impeached, was that he did not get those citations. They weren't delivered to him. He was told, he learned about them after Ms. Petrusis told him, we're going to try to, we're trying to revoke your permit on July 1st. Then he said, to quote Vince Lombardi, what the hell is going on here? Contacted his people, did you get any notices, whatever? And that's when he saw the 16 from March. Now, I mentioned the requirement of clear and convincing evidence, I wanted to show you that. We talked about due process is no less than the city code. The clear and convincing evidence standard, the Supreme Court precisely says, "So clear as to leave no substantial doubt, sufficiently strong to command, to command the unhesitating ascent of every reasonable mind." Now, there's a justice called Walter Krosky who once said, not a Supreme Court justice, an appellate court justice, who once said, that's too strong, that almost sounds like even a tougher standard than beyond a reasonable doubt. And he wanted the Supreme Court to say, oh, it's really not as strong as we said before. They wouldn't. That's the standard here. That's what you are charged with reviewing. Is the evidence sufficient to revoke, is it clear and convincing to revoke the permit as to this permit holder? That's the permit holder I represent, and that's the permit holder that's entitled to due process. Now, I want to, I'm going to repeat something. I don't like to repeat myself, but this is one that I think is worth repeating. If the city, in August of 2021, when Mr. Cole sent his letter to Mr. Solomon saying, I want to inform you that there are violations, if the city corrected its records then, as the city attorney said, she's going by what the city has told her, if they corrected their records then and began sending all these notices at that point to the Wilshire address, why, why in the world, when it came to a really important piece of mail, the revocation letter of May 19th, why was that sent to zip third at the bank's address? If they've been using the correct address all this time? Now, I understand, anything is possible, mistakes happen. I'm simply suggesting it's not clear and convincing that all these notices went to zip third. But the other, the overarching point I want to make, and this is a terribly important point, because it's right in your code, even if they all went there, even if, not only did they go there, if Mr. Solomon was at the Los Angeles Coliseum at a football game and in front of 100,000 people, the city said, Mr. Solomon, we've been sending addresses, we've been sending letters to your Wilshire address, regular mail, that still wouldn't comply with the city code. And that's because somebody at the city, when they wrote this code, decided, we are going to really respect the rights of a permit holder. And that's what I'm asking you to do. I'm asking you, when you review this administrative law judge decision, to respect the City of Temecula code. That's what due process requires. As I say, I would love questions. Any question you want to ask, boy, would I love to have it. Because otherwise, I'm, you know, from the advocate point of view, you really want to know what the people who are going to make the decision are thinking. And if I miss something, or if I misspoke, or you think I misspoke, please hit me over the head.
Are you through with your presentation then?
Well, I've got four minutes left, but I
Go ahead and finish up your presentation.
I felt that, okay, I'll tell you, I will finish my presentation.
Okay.
I was going to sacrifice some of my time, but I'll finish it. The only other point I would make is, if Mr. Solomon had gotten these notices, he would have to be a fool to ignore them. Nobody wants to receive a bunch of notices like this and ignore them. Mr. Solomon testified he's been involved in hundreds of properties for 40 years, he's got nine properties in Temecula. You know what happens if somebody gets a lot of notices and ignores them? You know what happens if somebody, something happens in that restaurant that somebody says he should have known was an existing hazard? He gets sued. It's a risk. If you're on notice of something, this is civil liability, not the Temecula code, civil liability. Somebody can sue you and say, you indulged this, you have some responsibility. We're not governed by the Temecula code. You got a bunch of letters, you should have done something about it. He would have to be a complete idiot to ignore notices he received by regular mail or any other way. Again, that doesn't have anything to do with due process, but it does have to do with the need to follow the city code. And it does, I think, impeach the idea that he knew about this before Ms. Petrusis told him on July 1st, telephonically, which the city could have done at any time. He owns nine properties, he wants to be a friend of the city. If they call him, do you think he's going to reject the call? He came down here and introduced himself to Mr. Watson, and he testified he's never had problems like this in any other city, not with his hundreds of, more than 100 other projects. With that, I'll just remind you, I very much respect that you took an oath. I hope you'll respect due process here. I understand all the arguments that due process was given to the bank. Nothing remotely resembling the due process that the City of Temecula promulgated was adhered to here. It simply wasn't. Not because of bad motive, not because of incompetence, my theory, inexperience. I commend the city for being, and I commend Mr. Watson for saying, we don't make these decisions lightly. You obviously don't. 10 years without revocations, that's a very honorable record. But please continue that honorable record by not revoking as to zip third. I've concluded.
Thank you, sir, for your presentation. At this time, is there, are there any clarifications? Ms. Fox, do you have any clarifications at this time with this presentation that you can give our commissioners, or should we go ahead with questions?
I think we should go ahead with questions, Madam Chair.
Okay. All right. So are there any questions? We'll start on this end.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Just one clarifying question here, because there's been so many different dates and, you know, thrown out here. So what is the date that you say that Mr. Solomon was first notified of the citations that the city was issuing?
First notified, July 1 by Ms. Petrusis.
July 1.
That's 2022.
So nothing prior to '22?
May I expand on my answer?
Please.
Okay. When he was notified on July 1, and thank you very much for your question, I really appreciate your engaging this. When he was notified on July 1, his testimony was, he contacted his office, said, have we gotten any notice of any citations? Give me every piece of paper. And they assembled eight envelopes containing 16 violations. Now, after this, to Ms. Petrusis' total credit, she made sure that he got notice of every violation as this proceeding was going on. And he testified that he had several conversations with Ms. Lane, which she does not deny, saying, comply with the code. And she said, I'm advised by my lawyers that if I comply with the CUP, excuse me, I misspoke, I said the code and I meant the CUP. If I comply with the CUP, as the city contends it's written, I'll be admitting that I have a weak case. So unable to negotiate that with her, he then hired a bankruptcy lawyer and got the order you saw on August 23. And that was necessary because he could not initiate an unlawful detainer. As you probably all know, there's an automatic stay, you've got to get permission from the court before you sue somebody who's in bankruptcy. The stay prevents all, if you're suing them, your litigation stops. If you're not suing them, you've got to go in and get permission from the court. So he went in, asked for relief from the stay, but also asked that the bankruptcy be dismissed. The court dismissed the bankruptcy. At that point, he was free to bring an unlawful detainer, as of August 23. But the point I'm trying to make, forgive me if I'm exceeding your question, but I think you're getting at, what action did he take, and when did he know, and what did he know, and all that? The action was very prompt after he learned.
Okay. So, but July 1 is when he received and then discovered there was multiple stuff that was sent to his office prior to that date?
Eight, starting in March, they had received some envelopes, a total of eight, that had 16 violations. But by regular mail.
Thank you.
Nothing certified. Thank you, sir, for your question. I appreciate it.
And following up on that, nothing was communicated to your client from the office that received those 16 violations?
Nothing was communicated until he initiated it. And if, looking at you right, he initiated to the office on July 1, what's going on? And what happened was, and again, Commissioner Watts, if you want to say the property manager should be punished, I would agree with you. But the city didn't comply with the code, it wasn't since certified. He, the testimony was, unimpeached, he received after July 1, these 16 envelopes, excuse me, eight envelopes, 16 violations. That had been sent, all by regular mail, and the testimony was that the property manager contacted Ms. Lane, who said, I'm working this out with the city, we've operated the same way for nine years, and that's true, there's nobody denies that. What happened, that 2012 modification was never enforced for nine years. And then they, then, which the city, according to how it's written, has every right to do, the city, as Mr. Watson testified, reached out to the property owner, said, you're open too late. And I think the loudness came up later. But Mr. Solomon was involved in none of that. But to answer your question directly, yes, the office did, property manager did not tell him about those letters, and I'll go further and say, they should have. But I'll go further still and say, if it had been certified mail, it's hard to believe they wouldn't have.
Okay. So the property manager did not?
Did not. Talked to him.
At all?
Did not, at all.
Even though he had copies of the letters?
Did not. That's true.
Okay. That's my only question, thanks.
Any questions down here?
I think I have the same question.
Sure.
Which was answered, thank you.
Okay. Something that you didn't mention, and I just want to clarify, the CUP that you believe that is in place for your client is a type 47 license, background music allowed, and the hours, I think, were 11 to 10 and 11, 11, that, you know?
Yeah, I understand exactly what you're saying. Now, I don't know the number if it's 47 or what, but what I do know is this. I don't know, just as a human being, walking down the street, talking to you, not a lawyer now, it's hard to believe that anybody, as I think I said earlier, would surrender those money hours where you make people drinking in bars late at night for the music. But that's what that CUP says. And to expand on a question that was asked earlier, Mr. Puma testified that, and I think Mr. Pennman got to this, Mr. Puma testified, I went in there, I told them what I wanted, I'd been on the business, Old Town Business Association, which Mr. Solomon was a founder of when they renewed that association later. Nobody told me that they were cutting the hours, I didn't know and I didn't read it. I put it in a drawer. Mr. Pennman was, his last description of that accurately reflects the testimony. But Mr. Solomon bought the property, I think in 2016, his entity did, 15 or 16, sorry if I don't have the exact year. And that CUP was in place, and the bank was in that restaurant at the time, and they were operating the same way they had for nine years, or not nine years, three or four years at that point, you know, till the late hours. And they continued doing that until, and only stopped doing it after the administrative law judge hearing. Did I answer your question?
Yes. I just want to know what your client's understanding of whether that CUP was in place or not, that's all.
That was the most recent CUP.
Okay.
So we, unless somebody says that we're going to overturn it because
Right.
There's a word processing error.
Right.
The answer to your question, sir, is yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's it.
Hey, Commissioner Watts?
Yeah, going back, so the first time your client heard about the violations was from the city calling?
From, to her total credit, from Ms. Petrusis calling, not, you know, the city lawyer, who has had to continue, I, I, I'll just make an assumption here. I'm going to make an assumption that when she looked at the record, she saw that they'd sent the notice of revocation to Mr. Solomon, zip third, at the bank restaurant. And she wanted to make sure he knew there was a revocation proceeding. But whatever the motive for the call was, she told him, this was unrefuted testimony on July 1, we are trying to revoke your permit, and he said, what? And, you know, and she spoke to him again on July 5th, and this is Friday, again, I want to emphasize, he's not hard to reach. She calls it Friday, this is the Fourth of July long weekend, July 1 is the Friday. He calls her back within 15 minutes, and to her credit, she called him back 10 minutes after that. So it wasn't hard to tell him what was going on. Anybody at the city at any time could have called him.
Okay. And the letters that were sent to the Wilshire address were all prior to July 1, is that correct?
Yes, they were.
Is the same property manager still employed by your client?
That's not, that's not in the record. I'll answer if you want me to, but I don't want to, I don't think I'm supposed to exceed the record, and I always try to play by the rules. I think I'm not supposed to, I mean, I'll be happy to
That's fine.
Tell you anything you want.
No, you don't need to answer.
Let me just say, let me just say, there was obvious disappointment. Okay?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
I can say that because that came out in there.
Okay. Any other questions, commissioners? Good? Okay. All right. Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Okay. So at this time, we will ask Ms. Petrusis to come out for her rebuttal, and Denise, can you clarify the time left?
20 minutes, 58 seconds.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. I'm not quite as tall as Mr. Edwards, but I appreciate, I might steal that idea from him. So I wanted to begin first in response to this allegation that I got, Ms. Lane's testimony incorrectly. On page 1518 of your packet, it's a page of transcript, my question to her, in 2021, did you ever speak to anyone at Zip Third Investments or Metro Resources about the civil penalties or the citations? Answer, yes. Question, and do you remember who you spoke to? Answer, David Pinkerton. My question to her, what is Metro Resources? Answer, they're the management company for the property owner. Answer, they're the management company for the property owner. Question, and by property owner, are you referring to Zip Third Investments? Answer, yes. Apparently, Ms. Lane changed her testimony. Moving on, so Mr. Edwards referenced the definition of responsible party in Code Section 1.21.020 subsection C as in cat. Any person whom an enforcement official determines is responsible for causing or maintaining a violation. It's city staff's position that it was the bank that caused and maintained the violation. Code Section 1.21.050 subsection B as in boy, references the business owner, it's the business owner that receives notice of the violation and the specific requirements of how to serve that notice or that that citation in this case. It does not require, the code does not require separate notice to be given to the underlying property owner, and Mr. Edwards cannot point to a code section that requires that. The bank was properly served with citations and civil penalties. However, it went one step further and it put Zip Third on notice that its tenant was violating the CUP. It is disingenuous for Zip Third to claim it wasn't properly notified. It's simply unbelievable that someone receives a piece of mail at their official address from the city of Temecula, addressed to their business, referencing a property owned by that business, notifying that their tenant is in violation of the municipal code and that they would then disregard that notice and claim. Well, it's not proper service. We don't, we don't have to do anything. As the ALJ found, Zip Third was on notice of the violation since at least August 2021. Mr. Solomon testified that he did not visit his often, his office often during the pandemic. But his decision not to visit his office or make arrangements apparently to have mail forwarded is not the city's responsibility. There's been, I think, this argument or suggestion about the CUP shouldn't be revoked as to the underlying property owner. There's only one CUP. The code does not provide for an opportunity where a CUP is revoked as to a business, but not to the property owner. And I don't know what that would look like. The city, the city issues a CUP that allows that business to operate in a certain way. And I don't know how it could be administered effectively if the CUP kind of flip flops between, okay, now it's in effect, but now it's not in effect. The municipal code also does not require staff to specifically work with the property owner or with the violating party before initiating a revocation process. There's been some references to, oh, well, this was the established procedures. But really, Mr. Watson's testimony referenced a philosophy. There are not separate requirements in the code that staff work with, collaborate with an individual or with a business owner or a property owner before issuing citations or before initiating revocation. Turning to some of the arguments that were made by Mr. Pennman. He mentions a staff person inadvertently made an error on the hours contained in the 2012 conditions of approval. And then he accused Mr. Fisk of of perjury. The bank is trying to manufacture some form of uncertainty when it comes to what the operating hours are in the approved CUP. Mr. Puma testified that he received the 2012 conditions of approval, but didn't look at them. Ms. Lane testified that she threw it away when she was doing a clean out at the restaurant. Not to belabor this point unnecessarily, but there's no requirement in the code that an individual receiving a CUP must sign the conditions of approval as being accepted. The bank spent a considerable amount of time taking issue with the evidence of criminal activity associated with the bank, whether or not those two shooting events were properly attributed to the bank. Sergeant Hefner's testimony was based on his personal observations of the many, many instances of public intoxication, of DUI arrests, of individuals saying that they had come from the bank, of his opinion that there were over-serving issues at the restaurant. Mr. Cole also testified, based on his personal observations, of drunken disorderly instances of picking fights with police officers. The ALJ found their testimony to be credible and persuasive. It's our position that the Planning Commission can also find their testimony to be credible and persuasive. Notably, the bank does not dispute that the noise violations occurred or that they violated the live entertainment provisions of their CUP or that they operated and sold alcohol in excess of the permitted hours. None of those violations are in dispute. They're focusing only on the amount of criminal activity associated with the bank. Any reason about why the hours were changed back to 2007's hours is protected by the deliberative process privilege. But what they do have is Mr. Fisk's unequivocal testimony that there was an intentional decision made to roll those hours back. There's been a suggestion that, well, they only wanted to add live entertainment, but it's a condition of approval. Their request to modify the CUP was modified or was granted, and then a condition of approval is that their operating hours were changed. Mr. Pennman also mentioned about revoking the CUP is going to take away an individual's livelihood. There's no evidence of that in the record. But I want to point out that the bank, if that, if the CUP is revoked, the bank is not losing its ability to operate, it's losing its ability to sell distilled spirits and to have live entertainment. And I don't think I have anything further, but of course, if the commission has any questions for me, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you, Ms. Petrusis. Are there any questions? Yes, Commissioner Ruiz?
Yep, thank you. So just want to clarify a couple of things. So you mentioned first, the city code is only required to notify the business owner for citations, is that correct, and not the property owner?
The business owner is who they determine to be responsible for the violations. And so the business owner, i.e. the bank, was cited.
Okay, and then even though we've got two separate business issues being represented, just being sure clarified, that's one CUP, correct? These are not two separate items? It is one CUP that runs with the land as we all understand it, correct?
Yes, Commissioner, and I've heard some refer to the 2012 CUP. There's just one CUP that's been modified twice. When we're talking about 2012, we're talking about the conditions of approval that are associated with that one CUP, and they have changed.
Great, thank you very much.
Commissioner Watts?
If a CUP is revoked and recognizing the city has not done that previously, would the property owner have redress as far as reapproaching the city for a new CUP?
I don't know what the limits would be on a property owner applying for a CUP. I think that would be handled in the normal course.
Thank you.
Commissioner Solis?
No, thank you. No, sorry.
And nothing? Okay. All right. I don't think I have any questions. I appreciate your comments. Any other questions before we close this part of the hearing? No?
I have a question, but I don't think you'll let me ask.
Uh, yeah, I don't think so, sorry.
My pleasure.
All right, thank you. You want a break? You want a break? Are we good? Does anybody need a break? We good? Okay. Gary, we good? Okay. All right, so at this time, we are going to ask for public comments. And Denise, do we have any public comments?
Yes, we do. We received one letter of written correspondence and we've received two request to speak slips here.
Okay, so then I will go ahead and read this paragraph on public comment for those that are speaking here today. A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the commission on matters not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary or by submitting an email to be read aloud into the record at the meeting. Email comments must be submitted to planningcommission@temeculaca.gov. Speaker cards for in-person comments will be called in the order received by the commission secretary, and then if time permits, email comments will be read. Email comments on all matters must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments. All public participation is governed by the council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by Resolution Number 2021-54. Our first public speaker, please.
I will read into the record the letter of written correspondence that was received or emailed to our city clerk's office on Tuesday, February 14 at 9:58 a.m. From Alan Ronska. Erica, two shootings, one death, and three people shot. Forty-six violations, loud vulgar music until 1:30 a.m., a nuisance to all the surrounding businesses. After all I have listed, I am amazed and why the city of Temecula is even remotely considering extending the CUP? Question marks. Outrageous to waste the taxpayer dollar symbols and in an insult to all of us at Old Town Temecula, small business owners. Please reconsider extending the CUP. This place brings a bad element to Old Town Temecula that we can all do without. Once they extend the CUP, they will revert back to previous behavior. FYI, the outdoor music is so loud, our patrons have to speak louder in order to converse. Exclamation points. Unacceptable exclamation points. Alan Ronska, Properties.
Okay, thank you. And public comment?
Yes, our first speaker is Stephen Slaughter.
Hello, thanks for hearing me. My name is Stephen Slaughter and I'm a resident of Temecula. I've worked at the bank, Mexican restaurant and bar, off and on, since 1983. I've worked for all three owners at the time. I do have a full-time job. I'm a liquor buyer for a grocery company, so I'm very familiar with the on-sale protocols in the liquor industry. I do work at the bank one day a week. It was around 2008, like they said, that the bank was permitted to stay open later in the evening, few nights a week till approximately 1:30 a.m. The new owners, Amanda and Ryan, have continued to keep the restaurant open. They do take the responsibility of liquor license holders very seriously. The tragic, the tragic incident that happened at the bank made us all victims. But then it also only strengthened our rigorous safety protocols. I've been to many other bars and restaurants and nightclubs in Old Town Temecula that do not have as rigorous as security procedures like we do at the bank. In fact, at this point, I do feel very safe and confident working at the bank because the owners have provided experienced security personnel. The one thing I just want to leave you with here today is that the owners and management at the bank are responsible individuals and they do take their, again, they take their liquor license holding very responsibly. They're, it's an honest-to-goodness, just mom and pop operation, and they're just trying to make an honest living and to put food on the table for their children. I think they should be willing to continue to do so and operate in the way they have. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you.
Next public comment.
Caesar Rodriguez. Hello?
Honorable Chairman and Commissioners, like, thank you guys very much for allowing me to speak. I am a bartender at the bank, started there as a bussler and has been a place that has showed me the industry as of serving as well as giving my utmost honesty and love to this community that I have now become a part of myself, thanks to my emotional ties to the bank. Amanda and Ryan are formidable and completely amazing managers. They've been there and kind of changed the place into the dynamic that have made it a fun and a fun and great place to be able to come and enjoy a good time. During COVID, they they established a great entertainment that allowed everybody from all of Southern California to come and truly experience and enjoy what Temecula has to offer. If it ended at the bank, it started at our beautiful wineries and it only only gets better from there. I'm just happy and fortunate to be able to be here. And as somebody who's who experiences the nightlife here in in Temecula, the bank is probably one of the least places that I feel, that I don't feel safe at. Every other place that I've ever been to brings in thugs from other places or up north, down south, and and have less, less security guards there, as my my correspondent, Mr. Steve, said, that don't ever, I mean, in other ways seem very unprofessional. And I've seen other instances of, of, you know, very, very untrained people trying to take care of discourses in other places as well, too. Like I said, I'm fortunate for the employment that I've that I've gone from them and all all the safety protocols they've taken to be able to ensure that nothing of the manner that happened at the bank ever happens again or will ever happen again. Like I said, I feel very safe there and I'm happy that you guys let me speak on behalf of the bank.
Thank you, Caesar.
Thank you very much.
Okay, are there any other public comments?
There are no further requests to speak.
Okay, and just to give anyone a chance in the audience that has a public comment, if you would like to come up at this time, and to clarify, they would only have three minutes. I think the timer said five. We have another, okay, come on up. And if you'll just fill out a speaker card after you're done and make sure that the secretary has that, that would be great.
I will, thank you.
And what is your name?
I'm Ron Parent.
Okay.
I'm Ryan's father. Lived here for 25 years with my lovely wife and raised a family here. These, the death of this young man at the restaurant was devastating to us, to this family, as well as to the family of the deceased young man. They are working really hard. They're running a small business. They're doing the best that they can. They've made mistakes, but the operation, the permitting is, it's so questionable. Why would, why would hours be cut by 20 hours a week, the most profitable hours in 2012? And the city would allow the restaurant to operate all the way through nine, 10 years and then suddenly pop up and cut these kids off from running the restaurant the way the restaurant had been run for all those years? The police report The police reports, the police call to service, are no higher at the bank than they are at any other restaurant in town, like Restaurant Town and Bar. I don't know how the tug-of-war happened between the city and these people, but it's escalated beyond what is reasonable. I'm a small business owner, have been my whole life. And I can't imagine fighting something as enormous and powerful as the city just to stay in business when there's literally what appears to be made-up information that the city is trying to prove a point. The kids are trying to fight to keep, it seems almost ridiculous to pile on to these people.
You have 30 seconds.
It feels like an attack on my family. So, I hope that you understand these are human beings. When you take away the right to a living, it's breathtaking to me. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Anyone else? Okay, come on up. Again, make sure that you fill out a slip, pink slip, and turn that in to our secretary, Commission Secretary.
Understood, thank you. So I'm Sergeant Deshy Tibbs from the US, United States Military.
What, tell me your name?
Deshy Tibbs.
Deshy Tibbs, okay.
So I've been coming to the bank for the past three years since I've been back. It's been a while, but the bank is the only place that I will allow my team to come to because of the least amount of trouble or turmoil that goes on at the bank. Yes, I mean, I wasn't around. I was deployed for the, the, I guess, the murder that took place, and I wasn't there for that. It's a sad situation, but we can't take away from what's been going on in Old Town. It's not just happening at the bank, as you guys, I mean, I'm sitting here listening. There's been other shootings and other altercations that take place. I mean, just say, we all can't be at, we can't be in place at the same time. We can't be there for everything, I should say, so to speak. And the situation took place. There was no police officers in that area at the time. As, you know, we can't say they could be. They're doing other jobs or trying to protect everything else that's going on. But we can't control the other people or the civilian around the area. We can't control those that are out to do things that are uncontrollable or unknown because we don't know what's going on with other people's minds or situations. The bank has given multiple people place to go that they felt safe, that it was fun. It was a growing situation. I've seen it from when I started going there, and there wasn't many people going, to it growing to be something where there was an abundance of people going. So it's a beautiful thing to see the unity that the bank brought. And to see that the city is attempting to take that away seems to be, I mean, words that were used, childish, reasons unknown. Or, I'm not here to bash the city. I've been living here for a long time, and I love the city. So I can't say too much about it. But it does hurt to see that I don't really have many places to tell my soldiers that's coming from Camp Pendleton, that's coming from Fort Irwin, you know, that, hey, this is a good place that you can send your soldiers, that there won't be no turmoil, there won't be no issues, there won't be no problems. And now to see that, hey, that place is about to get taken away from incidents that I can't even speak on. So, all I can say is that this is a great place. And I can bring soldiers to this location. And if you guys take that away, we don't really have much where else to go in this area. So that's all for me.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming up. Okay. All right. Oh. Okay, come on up.
My name is Chris. I'm a DJ, and I am the general manager of the bank. I've been living here since I was 12, 42. One of the pioneers of creating this nightlife in this area, especially in Old Town. To talk about my citations, as soon as Mr. Cole talked to me about how high the decibels were, I stopped it right away. It didn't take a week. It didn't take two. I just did what he told me to do. As Shai said, you know, there's so many incidents. And every single club nightlife, it's uncontrollable. It's part of the life, unfortunately. And all these finger-pointing at the bank. Yeah, no, we were with a long streak of no fights, no altercations of any kind. The other thing I want to touch is that the livelihood comment. If you are going to switch it to a 41, that does affect it. We are a Mexican restaurant. What Mexican is going to come to the restaurant and just drink beer? They need tequila. You know? And as far as that, it's like the other people I mentioned, you know, liquor sells. And it really does sell, and it does make money. You take that away, it's taking away from all my employees as well, whether it goes to a 41 or still in business. Name one restaurant out here that survives off beer and wine that wasn't already established as beer and wine. We were beer and wine, but we switched and made more income. So in considering of my employees, I hope that you guys make the right decision and not revoke the CUP. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Where are we timewise? I know. But where are we timewise as far as 30 minutes on public comments?
Uh, we have no limit on speakers.
Not today? Okay. All right. Does anyone else want to speak?
Trying to get my notes ready. My name is Sean Owens. I am the head security at the bank for the last, I'd say, two and a half years. I want to start off by saying it is a historical building. So even if the bank is closed, if we are open for business, a nightclub, there's people that's going to come and read the signs on the building. They're going to come and be interested. They want to see the vote. They want to be more involved in something of a building like that. So by saying that, there was a couple incidents, or I say that one incident that was spoke about, that an incident had occurred about a guy with a gun on the property. That goes for any other day. There's bums. There's people that's drunk that just come on our property sit during the time period of when we are closed. So I feel like incidents that happened on the days that were closed, there's nothing we can do. The incident that happened with the man passing was my brother. I was also there at the location. I was also there at the scene. I was two steps away from the actual shooting. Bullet hole in my sweater, everything like that. That night, there was nothing we could possibly did because there was no arguments. There was no fights. The location was closed. Best thing we can do, just like every cop tells us on the weekend, is to get people off our property. Anything that's off our property, we have to contact them. So all the calls and incidents that we do have coming in, they're not big incidents. They're just, somebody's on our property. Somebody's drunk. Somebody's not just listened to the after-hours of what we're giving. Since we changed our hours, I can't think of no incidents that can possibly be named since we have been, or have been changed of the hours that we accepted. There's just so much. I just had three minutes. It's a small location. It's a small business. So there's only so many people we can have in our location. So even with capacity or not, it's not like we can fit a lot of people at, say, Bailey's or any other bigger locations. So we are really strict about enforcement even before the incident happened. And our security is like so locked on. Our, the bosses, the owners, they real strict on us. The cops, I can see since the incident happened, a lot of cops have changed their areas because I'm seeing new officers. But even officers that was there, they feel freely and comfortable to come, walk by our business or come in and have conversations with our security guards because they know of the job that we do. Like I said, the incidents that did take place around the bank, there's nothing that security or owners should be, can do because we're not allowed to even step on property. So anything that's down the block, anything like that that we're getting blamed for, it had nothing to do with us. No incidents came from us. We're just doing our job to stay on property. So if any officers get, happen to get mad because we couldn't help or anything like that, my job is to stay on property and protect my business. That's really it. I hope it continues to stay open. It is cutting a lot of hours from the staff and everything and from my family and everything I have to provide. And I say that's pretty much it, I guess. I just hope you guys make the right decision for us, please, and so we can show and prove to you guys that it was a good decision and that we can continue going with the historical building that we have.
Thank you for coming on up. Okay. Anyone else? Last chance. Okay. All right. So, all right. So at this time, because we have had public speakers, there's five minutes allotted to the city attorney, the bank attorney, and zip third attorney to respond to the public speakers. So we'll start with the city attorney. Five minutes.
I don't think I need to respond to anything. I don't have anything further. But of course, if you have questions. Thank you.
Okay. All right. The attorney for the bank, Mr. Penman. Five minutes.
Thank you. The public speakers, I think, have very well underscored the true situation at the bank, supported by the evidence and the transcript. It's not the place that was described to Mr. Watson, and it's not the place that Mr. Watson described, although I agree that he backed off of that a little bit in his testimony. It's certainly not the place that the administrative law judge saw it to be. And I hope that it is not a place that you see through the eyes of some people in this city who are desperately trying to do something about the crime that has occurred in Old Town. But there's so little they can effectively do. And as a result, this matter is before you And as a result, this matter is before you first this morning and now this afternoon. And I again can only ask you to do the right thing, not the right thing for the, uh, property owner or for the, um, business operators alone, but the right thing for this ci- city of Temecula. The fact that these, you heard the security gentleman speak. As the evidence shows, they doubled their, um, security after the, um, the tragic death. And as Mr. Watson's testimony said, um, all they can do is close on time. But the murder happened within the time they were allowed to be there. And, um, then Mr. Watson said, there's really nothing else. He didn't have any other suggestions what they could do. Revoking the CUP is not the solution to this problem. It's, it's, it's not the way to go. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, um, Mr. Edwards.
Thank you. I want to respond to the, uh, letter that was written because I think it relates to questions that Commissioner Ruiz and Commissioner Watts had. What you heard in that letter was, "Restaurant's noisy, it's dangerous, close it down." There was no mention whatsoever about the property owner. And that, that is a knee jerk reaction. The first thing, one of the first things I said to you today was, and I read you, and it's on a slide. The administrative law judge at the start of the hearing says, "Am I hearing from you that there are two permit holders here? Both the property owner and the restaurant operator." And Ms. Petrusis, the city lawyer, said, "Yes." Now, you're absolutely right that there's one conditional use permit. And, uh, Commissioner Ruiz, 100%, right on. Commissioner Watts, you're absolutely right that it runs with the land. But here is where the rubber meets the road. Mr. Watson, to his credit, correctly testified, and I quoted this, "A CUP conveys a vested right to the property owner. And the city has this procedure. You let the owner know." Here's a citation, here's a violation, and you built, you don't just send them a letter and say, "We're going to revoke your permit out of the blue." Due process requires, even if the city code says, "Well, we only," the city is arguing, "Well, we only have to give notice to the business owner." And that's obviously, to the extent the person who wrote that email or letter uh, knows there are two permit holders here, they're certainly ignoring my client. It would not be due process. I don't think either of you believe, I can't, I'm not a mind reader, I'm making an assumption. I don't think either of you or anybody up here believes it is due process to revoke without notice in accordance with the code. Due process requires telling somebody, "You've got a property right, you're due the process. We owe you the process of knowing what's going on. We're telling you, this is what we do, we're business friendly." Now, Mr. Watson, it's correct, as Attorney Petrusis says, Mr. Watson's expression of the philosophy, his words, which he also says are the practice of the city. He didn't just say, "This is our philosophy," he said, "This is our practice, this is what we do." It's true that that's not written in the quote, word for word. But I emphasized before about how the code was idiot proof. So the point here is, you could absolutely say, "There are two mit, two permit holders. We are revoking the rights of the bank." But the, the owner still retains the vested right in the CUP. Operate a restaurant, can get another tenant, can move forward. And there's absolutely no reason not to do it, and it would be an absence of due process if you failed to do it. I've got a minute and forty-six, and I'm happy to get any questions, boy would I love them. If anybody has one.
Um, I do have a question.
Sure.
Um, regarding the unlawful detainer.
Yes.
And the status of that.
Yes.
And, um, is that still set for March 3rd?
Now, that, okay, uh, I'm go, can I go out? I'm, have to ask your permission, and I'm, Ms. Fox, I want to address this to you also, even though I know, I, I know a Madam Chairperson, you're, you're the boss. I just don't want anybody to ever say, "I went outside the record," and that's not in the record, so.
Do you believe that evidence of the current unlawful detainer action is new evidence that was before the K O K?
And that's, that's accurate. It wasn't because of what, it, we had the hearing on the thirty, uh, but Ms. Petrusis, correct me if I'm wrong, the 31st of August and the 1st of September, I think, is correct. And, uh, as of that time, there was no unlawful detainer. Please remember, August 23rd is the first date, um, that it would have been feasible after that order was entered on August 23rd.
Okay.
That's the bankruptcy order.
All right, um. Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that counsel can answer the question if he has the information. Okay?
Okay, now, I, I will answer the question. There is an unlawful detainer trial set. There were, we have an unlawful detainer lawyer, it's not me. I thought the unlawful detainer was set for March 8th. If you looked it up and saw March 3rd, you may be correct. I could be wrong on the date, but it's the first few days of March, I know that. I also know they waited a long time to get a trial date, even though the code says you get a trial date quickly. You don't. It, the courts are really backed up with unlawful detainers. We're still seeing the effects of COVID. Plus, it's, it's a business case, it's going to be a little bit more complicated, and there was extensive negotiation with the tenant, trying to get the tenant to move out. Also, there's a lot of ways people can delay an unlawful detainer, even though you're entitled to a preference. But move forward as expeditiously as we could.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions while Mr. Edwards is up here? Okay, so, thank you.
Thank you for your courtesies throughout. I really appreciate all your attention, thanks so much.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, so this is really our last opportunity to ask questions um, before we have discussions. So if there's any other questions of any of the attorneys, this would be the time to do it. So, are we good? Everybody good? Okay, and then I'm gonna have Ms. Fox right now, um, speak a little, give us a little guidance here at this time, that would be great.
Are we supposed to, excuse me, I just don't want to hear anything attorney-client. Are we supposed to leave when you, when you do that? I don't know the proceed.
No, I think you can stay.
Okay, thank you.
Correct?
Thank you, Madam Chair, yes. So, um, I wanted to, uh, offer to the commission that now is the time for your deliberation uh, to decide whether or not you are going to move forward with, uh, adopting the determination by the administrative law judge or modifying that in any way. Um, I did want to add a couple of clarifications just to get the record complete here. Uh, one was mentioned by counsel for, uh, the bank, Mr. Penman. Uh, last evening, he had asked for a reconsideration about entering into evidence, uh, the video, uh, from the January shooting, uh, that occurred on the patio of the bank. Um, that I had previously provided my rejection of that request. That was both evidence that was not before the administrative law judge. Also, it's part of an ongoing criminal proceeding of which the investigators and district attorney do not want that information publicly released. Uh, and I also cited some appropriate official privileges under the evidence code. Uh, as well, he, uh, he asked again for another continuance. Uh, I rejected that earlier for good cause, and so then, uh, I would be, my recommendation to this, uh, commission that any request for continuance, uh, be again rejected. As well, um, I wanted to offer a couple of points of clarification. Uh, there was a lot of discussion regarding, uh, the notice issue. Uh, and I wanted to invite the commission's attention again to the city municipal code 1.21.050. Uh, I don't believe that that provision, as noted by the counsel for the city, is applicable to Zip Third, the property owner. That subdivision B as in boy provides that the enforcement official shall attempt to locate the business owner. In this particular instance, the business owner is indeed, um, the CNC Puma. Uh, that business, uh, as we know, is the manager, the CEO is Amanda Lane, along with Ryan Parent, uh, along with Craig and, uh, I think it's Christie, uh, Puma. Finally, as well, I wanted to point out, uh, as has been argued, there is only one CUP. I, I would also like to offer, uh, a comment regarding an issue that is part of the presentation by Zip Third, and that is the reference when the administrative law judge is talking about the fact about permit holders. Um, I am of a different view for the permit holder. Uh, in this particular case, I believe is indeed Puma Corp. They are the applicant on the CUP. They are the applicant on each request for the modification. It is true that the CUP runs with the land and is an interest of which the property owner has. Um, there was some discussion and statements that Mr. Watson declared that they had a vested right. Of course, a vested right is a legal determination. A vested right occurs when you have a permit, and then you have good faith reliance on an issued permit, and you have a substantial, uh, expenditure of funds in reliance on that permit. Uh, that's from a seminal case called Avco versus City of San Diego. There was absolutely no testimony, uh, during the, uh, two days of hearing about any, uh, financial commitment that had been put forth. I'm not disputing it, and I don't think that's necessarily a point that is relevant to the revocation hearing, but it felt to me like it was, uh, a legal issue that I wanted to bring forward as your legal counsel here today about the issue of the scope of the vested right. We are not dis, I'm not disputing that the property owner has an interest in the CUP that runs with the land. Um, so I hope those are some clarifications that are helpful to you, and, uh, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
So at this time, if any of, um, my colleagues have questions of the attorney, this would be a time to do that. Any questions? Okay. Thank you so much for that, um, those clarifications, and, um, at this time, I'm going to close the public hearing. And this is our time to discuss. Uh, I would like to hear the discussion before any kind of motions are made. And so I'm going to start on my right this time with Commissioner Solis, with any, um, anything you would like to add.
Based on the, on the report and everything else that I've heard, um, to me, it's, it's, it's clear that the applicant did apply for a mon, a minor modification to allow for live entertainment. And at the time that the applicant comes before the city and requests a modification, then all other conditions of approval might be affected. And I think that's what happened at this time, that the original conditional use permit did not allow for live entertainment. And then the, the applicant requested, "Oh, well, we want live entertainment," which would be a new conditional use permit. And upon that decision of the city granting approval, then there was also modifications to the, to the time of operation and also the sales of, of alcohol, which is very common practice. So it, if the applicant comes and, and requests something else, then maybe the, the, the hours of operation is probably just one of the, one of the conditions that, that gets changed as part of the application process. And I believe that the applicant is aware of that because the applicant did apply for, um, a modification to the original CUP. And the city did approve it and, and, and moved forward with that. So my understanding is that the applicant is aware, just as, just as he was aware to apply for a modification to the existing CUP, he, I believe, is also aware of the final conditions of approval, which limited, um, the hours of operation. And also, uh, sorry, excuse me, the hours of operation and, um, the type of entertainment that was allowed, which is very specific. And, and in the can, in the resolution or in the approval letter, it's in bold. So it's very clear, the hours of operation and also the entertainment that's allowed.
Thank you, Commissioner Hagel.
Okay, uh, I just want to kind of start from a bigger picture here. We, we have a major problem in Old Town, and I just want to state that no one is saying that the bank is the only problem. And that, that's where all the problems stem from. So that, that was tended to be focused on here in some of, some of the discussion. But, uh, and I don't think we or anybody else should assume that actions, um, aren't being taken against other, uh, restaurants or other organizations in Old Town that could be in violation. We shouldn't assume anything. Those things could, could well be happening. The creation of the Metro Team several years ago was one of the responses to this growing problem. And, uh, it's been brought up that, uh, there wasn't much happening in the way of violations or, uh, police writing, writing tickets, um, prior to whatever the date might have been, 2018. But, uh, in the earlier, I'll say the earlier days, um, our issues have been growing and continue to grow. And, uh, it just says, says to us that, you know, 10 years ago, 15 years ago, there wasn't a problem, but there is a problem today. The, a year ago, uh, this commission took up a discussion uh, that led to the creation of an entertainment license. And the purpose of that entertainment license was to make it easier to deal with this issue, to make it whole, a lot less expensive for the city and all the parties that could be involved in it to, uh, to solve a problem that could be going on in, in a particular business. And that, uh, that entertainment license would be applicable to any business that, um, is making a change to their CUP or a new business that, that is coming in town. And, uh, that would be, I think, a goal would be to work towards having all the businesses be on that entertainment license that would be renewed or, uh, applied for renewal each year. And if there are problems, that, that renewal could be denied. And without having to go through what has been, I guess, a year's worth of, uh, you know, courts and, and legal battles and not to say anything bad about attorneys, but having to hire a lot of attorneys and, and all that expense. So, that's, you know, that's the goal that we have as a commission is to solve this problem and to work towards reducing the cost and, and, uh, a burden on everyone to be able to solve the problems step by step, business by business. And, uh, that's all I'll say for, for now. I'll save my other comments to later, so.
Um, you don't want to finish up with your discussion?
No, go ahead, that's.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Reese?
I'm unsure which direction you're going, thank you. Um, I first start off by saying that this is not something that's taken lightly. You know, this is 1,646 pages of, you know, information, a packet of information that we've received and, and read. I think for me, some of the things that stand out is the citations, I don't think were addressed the way I would have liked to see them addressed on the other side. There was a lot of emphasis on the unfortunate night of the murder, which kind of falls into the disorderly house conversation, but we've got 34 citations, 109 civil penalties that still have not been addressed. They have not been paid, they have not been, um, challenged or appealed. Um, they've, they're, they're still out there. When it comes to the modification to the CUP, um, I would think that if there was concern about what was stated in there, misinformation, misunderstanding, however that wants to be interpreted, why was that never then reapplied for? Why was that never addressed moving forward? You know, I, I appreciate the clarification by Ms. Fox earlier because I had actually jotted down when the, um, Mr. Penman mentioned, you know, that the 2012, uh, modification may not have been signed because they didn't accept it, yet they accepted the live music portion of it. So you are kind of in turn accepting it. And then overall, I, I think continually since this issue has started, it's been admitted that we're operating outside of our business hours because it's good for our business, but that's not really what's been put in place. We're doing live music when we apply for background music. And, and I, I really wish that would have been addressed a little bit more because to me, that just speaks to the character of, of the business that, that we're looking at. With regards to Zip Third, um, you know, that's, that's, it's challenging. I don't know how, how you would even begin to separate, so do you even start to go down that side of things? Um, I think it's been demonstrated that there's, the lack of communication has unfortunately led to, you know, Mr. Solomon in the position that, that he's in. But o- overall, as, as I read through the packet and as I listened to all of the cases being made today, those are the things that still stand out to me that I, I, I didn't hear anything to say, "Hey, yes, this is, this is good." Even the public comments of hearing about the business, that, that's great, and I, and I love to hear that. You know, the bank has been around forever, but why not address, "How do we work, let's fix this." Okay, I think that, I think the hours are wrong, let me apply for this and, and fix that. It's just been, for whatever reason, ignored or, or forgotten about. And the fact that that's still operating as what's best for their business, not with what's down on the condition of approval in the original CUP, is, still remains a concern of mine.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Watts?
Yeah. I spent Monday reviewing the file of 1,100 pages, and I didn't review everyone, don't get me wrong. But the, um, process requires the commission to review the transcript and the hearings, and that's what I did. And today's hearing was, uh, focused on that information. I didn't hear anything contrary to what I saw in my review. There may be some misinterpretation or a different interpretation of certain things, but not really, um, contesting the facts. And, uh, I know there's been a lot of things said today that I'm not sure if they're facts or not. I know that it's, it's been implied that one of the staff members may have made something up. At least that's how I took it. If that's the case, it seems like it would have been a burden to find some sort of proof to, to justify that. And, uh, that wasn't done, so. The 2012 minor mod clearly had the information in it that was communicated by the city. The owner or whoever was responsible at that time chose not to comply with the requirements that were pro, put on that business. A conscious decision, I think, um, to ignore what was put there. If the owner at that time or the, uh, the person had a beef with that, it seems like that should have been brought forward by that person and said, "I don't agree with this," and that wasn't the case. Just kind of ignored it and went on with whatever the person wanted to do. Now, that person could have passed that on to the current owners and the current people there, and I'm, I don't know what went on between you and the former, um, operator. But it seems like there was a little bit of responsibility to pass that on and, uh, more than just finding a copy of a document and was thrown away because during a cleanup. Uh, you know, I, I don't have a lot of experience with private sector. I do have experience with governmental sector and, uh, it seems a lot different in how things are viewed and reviewed and, uh, complied with. I can say that ever since this item has been brought to our attention as a commission, I was the chair at the time, the city has bent over backwards to make sure that nothing unforwarded or untoward was done regarding our role and our information. We knew absolutely nothing. And I want to compliment the city on following the rules and doing that. It still remains, though, that there were, there, there were, I don't know if there are continuing, but there were multiple, multiple violations of the requirements. And rather than trying to correct it, and, and as I gather, the city tried to get compliance, they always do. As far as I know, the city's always been, uh, bent over backwards to try to help the business community as much as we can. It appears to me there was a complete failure to follow up on, uh, notice by the city that there were problems and, uh, ignoring. were problems and ignoring it, just flat out ignoring it, it seems to me. Over 100 notices, letters were sent. Yeah, maybe they weren't certified, maybe they weren't required, I'm not sure. But it seems like a lot of people knew a lot about what was going on, and it wasn't communicated or it wasn't dealt with. It was just ignored. Hence, we have a hearing today and we are charged with, with our statutory role in reviewing something such as the revocation of a CUP. So, you can't, nobody has brought up any evidence to prove that, or to state that any of the problems were made up. Clearly, there was problems. We, I read the testimony by the police officers that were responding to the bank. Having law enforcement experience myself, I certainly can understand that, that viewpoint from our police officers and their responsibility to do that. That being said, there's probably things that the city can learn through this process. And if it ever happens again, probably would do it better. But the fact is, there may have been, I'm not sure, there may have been an inappropriate application or something of that nature. But the administrative law judge made a finding that they, they agreed with the action. So, I haven't heard anything really overwhelming today that would change that view in my mind. And I appreciate the fact that we have a business and we have an owner of that property where the business is, and that kind of complicates it. But the fact is, it's been pointed out, there's one CUP. That's what we're dealing with. And that's what our responsibility is in this hearing. And I think that everybody's been given a fair chance today and the opportunity to either contest or review the, the material that was brought forward. And, and I think it's been a fair hearing. And I know that there has to be one way or the other on this, and that's what we will be prepared to do in, in due time. So, those, those are my quick comments. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Watts. You had more you wanted to say?
I'll, I'll continue the conversation.
Well, this is our time right now.
Okay, yeah, I didn't know.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, I think there's been a lot of miscommunication on just about every party that's, that's, that's involved in this. And I would agree with Commissioner Watts that there's things that I think the city needs to do differently. And, you know, I will be happy to have that conversation with, with staff for the future. But it is one CUP. We can't split it. And we, you know, it's pretty, pretty black and white as to what we have to do. We have to make a decision to either revoke it or not revoke it. And as one of the attorneys said, we should take everything into consideration, the total picture. And, you know, given that you're reached, given 45 minutes, you didn't have the opportunity to talk about everything that was in that document. I did, I started Friday morning and I've done nothing but read that document. So, I've read every single page and, you know, take this very, very seriously. And, you know, we're, I think we're getting to a stage that we're going to need to make a, make a decision. But I would, I would also just state that there is nothing that says that any business can't come and apply for a, a license for entertainment, which also takes into consideration alcohol. And the reason why all of that is put together is that when you add individually, none of serving alcohol or music or loud music or shows, hours of operation, individually, they in themselves don't create the problem. It's when you put them all together that it can create the problem. And that's what we have here. We have a lot of businesses that are running with all of those things put together. And I think that tends to attract people who are not coming to Old Town just for dinner as we did 10 years ago, 15 years ago. I will say that I'm, I've been here for over 20 years now. I used to eat dinner in Old Town all the time. I used to love Old Town 24/7. I now have, I love Old Town in a very limited number of hours during, during the week. I, I've rarely come here for, for dinner. And when I do, I go to a restaurant that is only serving dinner and maybe beer or wine or whatever. That's just my, my choice. I have heard plenty of complaints from residents over the last couple of years regarding Old Town, that they don't feel safe going to Old Town. And, you know, I've tried to encourage them that there are, you know, you can bring your kids during the day, it's okay. But some people are just, you know, there's so much bad press and so many bad things have happened and that they just don't want to go to Old Town any longer. And I think that's a shame because as one of the speakers brought up, we have not only the bank, but we have many historic buildings here. We have an historic downtown. It's a, I, I love driving through downtown because it reminds me of where I grew up and, you know, a very historic area. And unfortunately, I feel that's been, you know, it's being taken from us so that we really want that back. We, we want a place that we can bring our kids. I want to bring my grandkids down and be able to walk, walk in the evening and feel safe. So, that's all I'll say at this point. I'll let you go ahead.
All right. Any, go ahead.
Thank you. Just looking for some clarification as well. So, if this action of the revocation of this CUP does not close the bank restaurant, correct? It would revert to the original type 41 under those hours, no entertainment, no music, no liquor sales, wine and beer?
Is that correct? Ms. Fox?
I think I might need to ask Mr. Watson to answer that for us. I would say that the action here that will be taken, we are suggesting be brought back for action on a formal resolution. So, you take action, we'll bring back the resolution to confirm that. And then there will be a period of time that that action can be appealed before it's final. So, even the action that this body takes will not be final for a period of time. I, I think that we can expect there's going to be an appeal to the city council. I think that Council Pennman pretty much noted as much during his presentation. But I haven't looked at the permitted uses that would be at play for the bank facility if indeed the revocation goes forward. So...
Okay. Well, before Mr. Watson does that, unless anyone else has any other discussion, I would like to say a few things and then have him.
Yeah, that, that's great. And for, for me, it just, it speaks to the comments on livelihood and business. We're, we're not charged or looking to take a business and close it and remove it from the city. I just, I want to be clear on what, what this action will result in if it does move forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, maybe go ahead right now.
Madam Chair, remember the commission? Commissioner Ruiz? Yes. So, if the CUP was revoked, it would remove the ability for the bank to serve distilled spirits under a type 47. And it would remove all the conditions that are associated with that CUP approval. The, their ability to operate as a restaurant is a permitted use. It doesn't require a CUP. So, they could immediately start operating as a restaurant, and they would have the ability to serve beer and wine by right. So, without a special conditional use permit, they would still need to, of course, get whatever permitting they needed from ABC to do that. But under our code, they're, they could operate as a restaurant by right with beer and wine.
May I ask a follow-up question? So, if, if they reverted to that restaurant, would they have the ability in the future to reapply for a type 47?
Yes, theoretically, they could come back and, and reapply at some point.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey. Any other questions for Mr. Watson? Okay. Okay. All right. Well, first of all, I want to commend my fellow commissioners. This is kind of visible. This is what we read and went through. And personally, I did. And we take it very seriously, what we've done today. And so, I think someone said, I think it was Mr. Pennman, said, we're not a rubber stamp and we're not. So, I want to be clear about that, that we have done our due diligence here as a commission. And, you know, this is not something that has ever come, has been one of our tasks, but we have risen to that occasion. So, I appreciate each of my fellow commissioners in doing their due diligence in this way. So, as I went through it, and really, I agree with everything that's been said, I'm not going to say much, but I'm just, you know, when I first read it, it was like, wow, there's this like nine-year gap, right, of where there haven't been any citations or things happening? And why would the city not know? And it, you know, it came to my attention that, that the police are the ones who let the city know because there were problems. And so, if there hadn't been problems, then I, I don't know if we would be here. But, so that answered that question for me, that that was why the CUP was checked at that time. As far as the failure to sign the condition of approval, our attorney cleared that up for me, that, you know, you accept the benefit and the burden. They were obviously accepting the benefit of having the live entertainment, but not the burden of the hours being changed. So, that was pretty clear to me. And Mr. Puma, or the owner at the time, never appealed to change these conditions of approval. So, that was pretty telling, that there is one CUP and that this owner is responsible to comply, and that has not been done. So, you know, I have watched personally the city bend over backwards in this situation to work with the bank. And as we just discussed here, you know, the business isn't over. They have a business even with this revocation. And I would encourage them to work with the city and be a good player because, you know, for me, honestly, Old Town has been a concern of mine from day one, being on this commission. And, but we respect and appreciate those restaurants that are good players and that comply with their conditions of approval. And that's really what we're looking at today. And so, that's really all I have to say. And I appreciate everyone involved who's taken time to be here today and bring their presentations to us. And, and I appreciate our counsel. And at this time, if they're, so the motion at this time, I'm going to have our counsel kind of help us with that, what that motion would be, if someone would like to give that motion.
Is that a question to me, Madam Chair?
Yeah.
So, there needs to be a motion either confirming or modifying or rejecting the decision of the administrative law judge to revoke the operation of the bank and to direct that a resolution be brought back confirming whatever that decision is.
Okay. All right. So, I heard that. Do we have a motion?
I, I, I believe at this point, perhaps the bank is making, making efforts to, to, to make changes, but I believe that they need to earn that. And I would make a motion that we confirm the revocation of the CUP at this time.
Okay. Is that motion good, counsel? Does that work?
That sounds good. And maybe we could add to it and bring back a resolution, a written resolution confirming same.
I will second that motion.
Why don't you add that to it and bring back a resolution?
And, and bring back a resolution to the commission for approvals.
And I will second that.
Okay. We have a first, Commissioner Hagel, and a second by Commissioner Watts.
Do you want to speak?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And any opposed? Okay. Motion carried. So, we will adjourn into our next regular scheduled meeting on March 1st at 6:00 PM here. And that is where we will receive that resolution, correct, counsel?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you to all of you who have attended today. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.